Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners Meeting for Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022. I'd like to welcome everybody this morning. We'll begin the meeting by asking Ms. Sandy Gilyard, a former educator and school board member, to come and deliver our invocation. And then Commissioner Turner will lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
As Commissioner Pickens has already said, good morning to each of you. I too greet each of you this morning. Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, God, we come this day calling upon your name because we know, God, that there's power in the name of Jesus. And not only that, we thank you for watching over us while we slumbered and slept last night, and thank God for you waking us up early this morning, clothed in our right minds, the activity of our limbs. And for that, we say thank you, for we take nothing for granted. Now, God, we ask your divine guidance in this meeting. God, we pray that you will bless each of our commissioners, those appointed officials, God, not just here, but all over the country, God, from our president to our governors. God, we just pray for your spiritual guidance, that we would continue, God, to keep in the forefront that we are servants of the people. God, help us to do everything decent and in order. And God, we be careful to give you praise, honor, and glory. But we realize, God, that we live in a great country where we can worship and serve you as we please, God, where we're not bound by the government, but we are the government. It is for the people and by the people. And now, God, have your way in this meeting for those that are being recognized, God, for their great contributions to this great county. God, we just thank you for that. And for all, God, and for every constituent, for every citizen of this great county, God, continue to lead us forth, and we'll be ever so careful to give you praise, honor, and glory in Christ's name. And everyone said, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Sandra, and also thank you, Commissioner Turner. Before we move into the approval of the minutes, I am going to move the agenda around a little bit. We're going to go through the approval of minutes, and we'll have our port authority meeting. Then I'm going to go down to presentations and go through the presentations, and then come back up to the public hearings. One reason I'm waiting for more people with the River Park group, that's on the 9:30 public hearing, because we have to make an announcement about that. So commissioners, can I get a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Mr. Chairman, let's move.
Okay, got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, a proper second by Commissioner Harvey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, we'll recess the regular Board of County Commission meeting, and I'll convene the port authority meeting. And we'll start with item A, any public comment on port authority items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to item B, an action item, adoption of the budget resolution for rail repairs, Resolution 2022-027.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think we have discussed this multiple times on multiple occasions, and everybody knows what's going on. This is just to actually switch the money over to the proper account. So I move approval.
Second.
Got a proper motion to move this forward by Commissioner Turner, and a proper second by Commissioner Harvey. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign.
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Three to two with Commissioner Rawls and Adams Act dissenting. Adoption, C, adoption of the resolution authorizing sale of the business park property. Commissioner Suggs?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This was the property that came to the board October 12th of 2021. It's out there at the Putnam County Business Park. We're selling it to Mr. John Tipton. The county attorney, Mr. Rich Commando, has been working through the process for the purchase-sell agreement. It was for $40,000 an acre, and it comes to $629,600. And just like to go ahead and get board's approval to execute this sale of this property today.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion to move item C forward. Harvey, no second by Commissioner Adams Act. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, any general discussion on port authority items? Any comments from staff?
No, sir.
Okay.
There is one, Mr. Chairman. Just as a heads up, as you know, we're still going through the process for the purchase of the property across from the Barge Port. I have had a email conversation with the folks representing Georgia Pacific. They're out of the country, and we're waiting to get the purchase-sell agreement. And once that comes in, I'll forward it to Mr. Commando, and he can work through the process of making sure we can get that back to you guys as quickly as possible.
But you don't see any, if I may, Mr. Chairman, you don't see any issues at this time that's going to fly?
Yes, sir. The, I've been in contact with the, with the real estate division, Georgia Pacific. They've asked us to work through the leasing agent. He just happens to be out of the country. He should be back this week, and hopefully will get us a purchase-sell agreement.
Good deal, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll, we'll end the port authority meeting, and I'll reconvene the Board of County Commissioner meeting. As I said, we'll move down to presentations. And first, we have proclamation. Gretchen Smith from the St. Johns River Water Management District have come forward, and I'll go to the podium. And I've asked Commissioner Rawls to read this proclamation.
This is proclamation number 2022-029, Water Conservation Month. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and whereas the state of Florida Water Management District and Putnam County Board of County Commissioners are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation, and whereas Putnam County in the state of Florida is designated April, typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month, to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas Putnam County Board of County Commissioners has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events, and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water, and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can help by saving water and thus promote a healthy economy and community. Now therefore be it resolved that by virtue of the authority vested in me as chairman of the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month. Putnam County, Florida is calling upon each citizen and business to help protect its precious resources by practicing water-saving measures and become more aware of the need to save water. Done, ordered, and adopted this 22nd day of March, 2022. Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Second.
Got a proper motion by Commissioner Rawls, a proper second by Commissioner Harvey. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, sure. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, commissioners. My name's Gretchen Smith, and I am a new employee with St. Johns River Water Management. I'm their communications manager. I come to Putnam County from Flagler County, where I've lived for quite some time, most recently at the Flagler County Health Department, where I was public information officer, and before that, the Flagler County Chamber of Commerce. So I'm no, I've been to a lot of county commission meetings in my life, and I'm thrilled to be here today to accept this proclamation on behalf of St. Johns River Water Management and appreciate the partnership.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could say one thing real quick? While you're here, I'll take this opportunity. So back in the mid-2010, 11, 12, Water Management District started a water star compliance program. It never really took off in Putnam County. We've got a lot of growth that we're experiencing now. I wonder if now wouldn't be a good time to potentially start educating the local governments about the program and maybe offering incentives to induce some water savings?
I think that would be fabulous. Let me, let me circle back with you on that.
Okay.
And we'll see what we can do.
I'm easy to get hold of.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do you have comments or questions? She wants to get a photo.
Can I get a quick photo?
And I need to sign.
Okay, sure. Make this official.
You were really here?
Yeah, I was really here, yes.
But we can Photoshop you.
Two, three. Let me get one. Thank you.
You were here.
Thanks.
Gretchen. Thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Okay, we'll move down to item B, and I'll ask our fire chief, Chad Hutchins, and Kevin Harris, to come up for human resources employee recognition of the month for February.
Lieutenant Tibbs has been with us since July of 2017. While here, she has completed fire school, fire officer one, and the fire officer two series. Katie is also an EMS instructor with St. John's State College. She has taken an active role in training and assigned to the hiring of new employees. Kaylee goes above and beyond with everything she has a part in. She is dedicated to the correction of this department, and her hard work has shown that. Kaylee is a can-do employee, and she tackles everything head-on at 110%. I've enjoyed watching her grow into the officer she is today, and I look forward to seeing what her future brings. Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
So I've been with the department for just under five years, been a part of a lot of the changes, and I mean, this is home to me. It's a family. There's no place in the world I'd rather be. So it's very exciting watching the changes that we've, that we've had over the past couple of years, and I can't wait to see what the future entails.
Well, thank you. Thank you what all EMS firefighters, law enforcement people do for us daily. We really appreciate that. Do you have family here? Because we're going to get a photo if they want to come up. We'll just have you all line up in the front, and the commissioners will be in the back. Is that okay?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, for our next presentation, I'll ask Ms. Wendy Musling, and then if Sharon Trine wants to come up. They're going to recognize an award to Ben and Luanne Williams for the 2021 Florida Outstanding Tree Farmer of the Year Award and the Florida Tree Program.
Good morning, commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here again, and I hope every time you see my face, you're thinking of all the good stuff that's happening in Putnam County agriculture, because that's what we're talking about today. Some really, really amazing award. This is a statewide award. It's the Florida Tree Farmer of the Year across the whole state of Florida, and our tree farmers this year are from Putnam County, Ben and Luanne Williams. I want to give you a brief introduction, and I'm going to show you a video because I think that it will speak for itself.
Hi, I'm Tony Grossman, and I'm the president of the Florida Tree Farm Program. Managing a forest involves much more than planting and growing trees. In addition to thousands of products from lumber to food flavorings, we rely on our forests to produce wildlife, fresh air, recreation opportunities, and clean, abundant water. Ben and Luanne Williams' Wetland Preserve has become an outstanding example of sustainable management of these forest resources. Like other tree farmers, Ben and Luanne have a deep-rooted connection to their land that drives them to be good stewards. The Florida Tree Farm Program is proud to be a partner in their stewardship. The Florida Tree Farm Program is honored to recognize Ben and Luanne Williams of Wetland Preserve as the 2021 John Gould Outstanding Tree Farmer of the Year. Congratulations, Ben and Luanne.
Thank you, Tony. We are extremely honored and grateful to receive this award. We feel like we are simply the stewards of this land while we are here, and the award sort of gives us the acknowledgement that the work we're doing is good, and it verifies that everything we've done thus far has been worth the effort.
In 2008, after being in the seafood business for 30 years, and we'd commercial fished, we'd actually owned a shrimp boat for a while, and we'd hunted all our lives, and we'd always wanted land, and we bought the first 3,200 acres at that point. I wish I could tell you, we had a really good plan, other than we had done the back-of-the-envelope math. The plan changed as we found out how many more things there were that we could do, how many more options that there were. Having come from the commercial fishing industry, we knew the tie-in between preserving upland habitat and the value of upland habitat being in good condition to water quality, and that flows downhill, and that is economic value to the state of Florida.
Initially, had visions of planting a lot more long leaf than we were actually able to plant. We had to come to terms with the fact that all of our land wasn't the right soil.
Leonard Wood, who was our forester, he showed us how to do a better job on some of the areas that we have subsequently planted. But with Leonard's help, paying attention to the county forester, and seeing some of the outreach events we went to, we saw ways that we could do it, and it's worked.
The streams and the creeks that ultimately feed into Rice Creek and the St. Johns serve a purpose that if this land eventually were developed, or some parts of it that we've put in the conservation easement were allowed to be harvested, it would be a detriment to, to the protection that it provides for the water.
When the county forester mentioned the American Tree Farm System, and it started to explain it to us and suggested that we look into it, soon as we looked into it, we saw that it hit all of these values that we'd already found were important, and we just had to step up to the standards. And it protected the wildlife, it's protected the water, protected the economic value of the resource. I mean, it was all there. If we can make an income positively affect wildlife, positively affect native plants and pollinators and all those other things, we try to fold all that in, and that's caused us to do, focus on long-rotation stand management. We use those stands when we do outreach, and the outreach portion of it is very important to us because we need prescribed burning here in the state of Florida, and it gives us an opportunity to explain how important that is to the, to the resource. To get them to understand that, you have to get them out here, to ride them around and talk about forestry and talk about prescribed burning, and invariably, there's a section in there about conservation easements, and we get to talk about best management practices for forestry.
We've put a lot of work into it, and we, we love this land, and we would like to be sure when we're not here any longer that in some way, it stays as we have left it for future generations.
Ben and Luanne, come on up. So I think, as you can see, that they are very well-deserving of this, of this award, and we're very thankful that they're here today. And just from extension and from the county perspective, they are fantastic with outreach. You know, they are willing. We just had the, the tour, March 11th, in the horrendous rainfall we had on Friday. We grinned and bared it, and we did it, and we had several folks out there, and just education, and we continue to want to educate our community members about how to, how to be good stewards of the land. They've already received the, the Florida Land Steward Award back in 19, I think, and so we just, we just want to continue to celebrate their accomplishments. So on behalf of the county, on behalf of IFAS, on behalf of the American Tree Farmer of the Year, American Tree Farm Association, we present this award to you.
All right, this is going to take 30 minutes. We hit on the economics of it, and 40-some-odd years ago, we were commercial crabbing out there on that river, and if you'd have told us somehow we were going to get from that ratty little 16-foot crab boat, dirty and smelly, and to here, there is no way that was going to happen. So as the lady said when she gave the invocation, this is a great country, and we'll testify to that. And the other thing is, that water quality component, the Water Management District lady spoke of it, you know, its economic value to this county and this state, and the, the way forestry and the way that we manage our land ties into that water, that's a really big deal. And we got to figure out how to have our cake and eat it, too. We can do it if we do it, if we have good leadership and good thoughtful forward planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Wendy, let's get some, a picture if we can.
Yeah. Got to have a picture. Got to have a picture.
and give us an update on the substance abuse reimbursement grant.
Good morning. So just briefly, on the spreadsheet that I gave, I just wanted to let everybody know that the grant didn't start until February 1st due to some issues on the DCF end. So in the month of January, we were not providing any transports. So the grant really goes from February 11th through December 31st. We had 218
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. Let's get some picture if we can.
Yeah. Got to have a picture. Got to have a picture.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Really do love what we do.
I bet you're glad to be at it. Congratulations.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay, our next presentation, I'll ask Dr. Nancy Russo with SMA Healthcare to come forward and give us an update on the substance abuse reimbursement grant.
Good morning. So just briefly, on the spreadsheet that I gave, I just wanted to let everybody know that the grant didn't start until February 1st due to some issues on the DCF end. So in the month of January, we were not providing any transports. So the grant really goes from February 11th through December 31st. We had 218 transports for the year, and you probably don't have the colored highlighted, but in 2021, all of the highlighted areas towards the bottom are new for this grant. These are the things that we have implemented for this three-year grant period from what we were doing in the previous grant. And probably the most important thing is now we're able to provide transportation for youth to baker act-receiving facilities. So we decided to start looking at, you know, when law enforcement has to do the transports versus us, what are the reasons? And there were 92 individuals that law enforcement had to transport this year. 58 were adults and 34 were kids. And some of the reasons that we found were, in the beginning, we didn't have the security cameras in the car, and we had to wait for those to be installed in order to be able to transport the kids, because that was a requirement from our liability insurance. 20 were transported due to being outside of the hours of our operation. We operate from 8:00 a.m. to midnight every day. And 13 were due to aggression or noncompliance. We can't take somebody who's actively aggressive. Law enforcement needs to transport those. Same with medical clearance. If they require medical clearance, that's another liability for us, so the law enforcement will transport them to the emergency department. 15, there weren't any documented reasons why we weren't called. So I work very closely with Major Rose when that happens to find out where the disconnect was. And then 3 were due to no staff availability. That's probably been our most difficult part this year, is being understaffed. The workforce is just not there for us. We're not getting many applicants, and then those applicants that we are getting don't pass background screening. So we're having a lot of difficulty filling the slots, and we have really been operating a nine-person team with one person, and a lot of people doing overtime from other departments, just to make sure that we could at least cover the shift as best we can. And then we also started looking at quarterly patterns. We have, on the spreadsheet, it is all the years we've been in operation for the CTU. And in 2020, we definitely saw a decline in the transports, most likely due to COVID-19. In quarter two of this year, we showed an increase in adult baker acts more than any other year. Not really sure why that is. You know, these are things that we can continue to look at over time. And then in quarter three and four, we showed an increase close to those from 2018 and 2019, and over those we saw in 2020, and that's possibly due to the restrictions being lifted at that time. So those were the transportation highlights. As far as the grant overall, we were able to meet all of our monthly performance measures and deliverables required by the grant. We met the training needs required, which were three CIT classes and five mental health first aid classes. And over the year, we were able to divert 18 individuals from needing to be placed under a baker act. So we were able to provide that service right then, when it was needed, to divert the crisis and require them to be placed under a baker act. And then also, we calculate the savings to the county, and we were able to save the sheriff's department $56,000 and 537 personnel hours, and that allows them to stay on the road. So that's pretty much the highlights of the grant. Are there any questions?
Okay, any questions?
Just a comment, I just want to thank you for everything you do. I don't know if the commission realize, but I do realize that you go way above and beyond what the county funds you to do. You participate in a lot of things that you don't have to, and I just want to say thank you from the citizens of Putnam County for what you do for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, Nancy in the foyer, and asked how long the presentation was going to be, and she said, "Not very long." And I said, "Well, I went through all that information, and that's a lot, just to get that report done." So we appreciate everything you do, and I know it's on limited funds, but we thank you so much. You want to remind us of what's going on the 31st real quick?
No. There is a summit at the World Golf Village, and it's around the opioid crisis, and it's a seven-county meeting, that there's going to be presentations from what causes the brain to malfunction in addiction, stigma reduction, and several other presentations. So everybody's welcome. It's a free event, and lunch is provided.
And it's March 31st? What time?
Nine to four.
Nine to four. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy.
Okay, next presentation, Ms. Linda Myers, Putnam County Tax Collector, and Ms. Brenda Bridges, Deputy Tax Collector, 2021 Property Tax Collection Report. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Administration, Clerk Reynolds, Ms. Frank, this great Putnam County team that's with us. Good to see some faces I haven't seen in a while, and of course, I'm glad to have the citizens in viewing audience, because this is some great information that we're going to be sharing with you. We know you're going to have questions from citizens, and so providing you the data ahead of time, I'm sure is helpful to you. Sometimes you reach out to us, and I thought better for us to do this collectively. So we're going to start with the folks who know the most, and we're going to share, first of all, Rose Wilkinson will share some of the information that is in your packet.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Rose, and I'm the Tax Administration Manager for the Tax Collector's Office. And this morning, we're going to give you a recap on the percentage of real property taxes collected so far this year in comparison to last year. For the collection count, we're at 67.7% compared to 2020 at 69.54% of the collection, at the same time as last year. Keep in mind that for 2021, we do have 135 more parcels to collect than for the 2020 And for the collection amount of money, we're at 86.07% for 2021 compared to last year at the same time, 85.88% of the taxes were collected. And if you had a chance to look at your handout we give you, if you have any questions on that, we'd be glad to help answer some of them.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner, at this time? Okay. Not at this time.
Okay, and up next is going to be Brenda Bridges, and she's going to be talking on an exciting topic.
I always get to share the good news, which is a great thing.
That's right.
So two amazing opportunities is the tax bill reminder that goes out, and with that, Linda will be addressing that, but part of that is a reminder to make you and the viewing public aware of the ability for them to pay their property taxes in four installment payments. So we have an application in your packet. Anybody in the audience that would like an application, Linda and Rose will be handing those out. It's a very simple process. The most important thing to understand is that if you are interested in applying to be on that installment plan, the application must be received by our office by April 30th, and then we will send out an invoice for those four installment payments. You get the same discount as if you had paid your taxes in November. So it's a great deal for everybody to be able to make that in those payments. Like I said, we send out an invoice. The very important thing to remember, the first payment is the June payment. And so because that's coming out, it's based on the previous year's taxes, and so you must make that payment in order to remain on the installment plan. And then the other key item is you must owe at least $100 in taxes to be eligible to be on that installment plan. So the information is in that application in your packet. You can apply online by going to putnamtax.com. On the right-hand side, you'll see a little icon. It's a house, and it says installment plan. You can click there and fill out the application online. For anybody that has a paper application, they can mail it in or drop it at any of our three locations. And then the other exciting thing that I get to share with you is an opportunity.
I'm actually going to talk about the reminder and let you follow up with that great opportunity, if you don't mind. We obviously didn't rehearse this well enough, but that's okay. We're busy doing work. So one of the things we want to share with you, first of all, when I talk about installment, I call it sliced bread. It's too fabulous, and I'm sorry, I was passing out. Did you talk about the actual number of them?
I did not.
So I believe we have about 3,800 parcels participating. We have 98,000 parcels and counting. You heard, an extra 135 this year. We have not touched, so please share that information. There are folks who really could benefit from this because their cash flow is not great, and this way, they get four payments, as she said, and they get their discounts. But even on top of that, even if you can afford it, it's still a great system. People say, "I won't remember." We actually send four bills. That is by law, by the way. This is a, I wish I could say this is a Linda Myers, Brenda Bridges program. It's not. It's a Florida statute program, and it is a fabulous program, and we have really underrepresented in the installment plans, so we always push this. So please share that information. And of course, going digitally now, those younger folks, they don't want to fill out a handwritten application. So as of last year, it's now on the web. Pull it down, fill it out, submit it on the web, and hopefully, that'll drive more. But what I want to talk to you about, because I believe you're going to, and I get to do the dirty work, and I want to share this with you, because you're going to get some phone calls. So by statute, and you're going to get phone calls that say, "Why are they sending me this? Isn't it costing money?" Yes, it is. But by statute, we must send this reminder notice. The reminder notice is designed to, gosh, I totally forgot to pay my taxes. Well, that can result, long-term, in some consequences that are not positive for that property owner. So because of that, the statute declares that our office will make sure people who haven't paid are reminded their taxes are due. That's a protection, it's one of those built-in protections for the property owner. So with that, in your packet, you've got a copy of what is a reminder notice. So here's what I want to share with you. This is, actually goes out today. We like it, we delay it as long as we can to catch as few people as we can who have already paid, and they're going to get this anyway. So we delay it so that when they receive it, they have about five days to come in and pay it. We've never found the magic day, but we're always looking for it. So we will take input from anyone who has advice on that. But it mails today. Putnam County will be getting it tomorrow and the next day, and of course, they have all the way to the 31st to pay it. So they'll have a week, or five working days. You'll notice in the middle, it talks about the delinquent taxes, too. That's part of the reminder notice. At one time, that was a separate notice that we had to send out. We were able to combine them and save a mailing. So if you have delinquent, they're going to show up in that middle. But the reminder, again, by statute. So what's going to happen? I paid my taxes yesterday. I have a copy, I'm on the installment plan. That was my fourth installment. So this impacts installment payers, too. That fourth installment is due March 31st, just like the regular tax is due by March 31st. So my installment payment, I paid it yesterday. When I paid it, I said, "Does that mean I'm going to get that silly reminder notice?" And the staff said, "Yes, you're going to get that reminder notice." Because of course, we had to send it to the printer two weeks ago.
Right.
And so you're going to get phone calls. I know our call center's going to get phone calls that said, "Why are they sending this to me?" Because I paid my taxes. So what I'd like you to do is share with them to make sure they read the top line, which is in red. If you paid your taxes after March 4th, 5:00 p.m., that was the cutoff date to get the database together to send to the printer. So yes, we probably got your payment, but if you're concerned, and you got this, and you know you paid it, please call us, because we're glad to verify for you. This is serious business. Your taxes on your home or your property are serious business. So we're not saying, "Don't call us," at all, but what we'd like you to do is point out, you know, you probably did the cross in the mail situation here, because there's a two-week lag, but feel free to say, but go ahead and call them, and/or they can go online and pull their name up, and it will show paid. But if they're not digital, have them give us a call, because we're glad to handle that. So wanted to give, to arm you with that information. And any questions on reminder notices or anything I've covered?
Any questions, Commissioner?
If not, I'm going to let Brenda tell you the good news about this reminder notice. There's really something special about this. Brenda.
You know, everything is about opportunities. So back in November, our office was contacted by Chief Chris Taylor with the Polacka Fire Department and Chad Hutchinson. And part of that reminder notice, we're able to put other things in with that notice that's going out in the mail. So in your packet, there is a public service announcement, what we refer to as a buck slip. So it's a three-layer public service announcement. It looks like this, and what the printer does is they set this up, it's two-sided, and so we were able to share some information about our office, and on the other side, was some very exciting information that we're able to share going out in this notice. So not only does this public service announcement about smoke alarms have the potential to save lives, but it also has the potential to gain points that will help lower the ISO rating for the county. So we appreciate that Chad and Chris Taylor reached out to us. So this is going out, and that reminder notice today as well. So that's about 31,000 mailers going out that have that information in it. And then we also will be mailing out that first installment in June, so there'll be some in that installment as well. But very exciting that we were able to partner with them and provide that information as well. Comments or questions?
Any questions? I just want to thank you for all y'all, your staff and y'all do with all the services that you provide, and really, the office that I have contact most with is the one in Crescent City, and get a lot of compliments about how polite they are, how efficient. They just really are just steady, steady, and a lot of people from Volusia County come up to use that office also. So thank you so much for everything you do, and thank you for this update and report. Commissioner Rawls?
Is there any potential, or are you looking at any potential for like an ACH withdrawal or automatic payment?
For your, for an individual to pay, we do ACH for certain situations. We plan on, thank you for that great intro. We're going to be back in, we're coming back. How's that go? I'll be back? We'll be back in two or three months, because we've got, we're waiting for, to see what legislation the governor signs. We've got a couple of things in the mix. We anticipate them being signed. We don't know, they haven't been, so we don't want to bring them up yet. But we'll be back maybe in the August, September window. We are doing much more digital, because, you know, I don't want to say we're being dragged there.
Yeah, you are.
My children might say, "I'm being dragged there." But it's an opportunity, keeping in mind, Commissioner Rawls, as you know, much of our citizenry is not digital. But we have a component, and of course, the savings involved with digital is pretty large. So we are moving that direction, and in our next report, we'll talk about our QR code opportunities, and they are now already on our retagranals, and you will see them surfacing in other locations for ease of digital. And we are looking at people that want to, we now have permission to send tax bills by email, so we have our software vendor putting that in. So we'll, we're going to report on that in a couple of months. I don't want to steal our thunder now, though, but thank you for that, and we'll look into that ACH opportunity.
The other question I have, so I'll talk about myself personally. I built a home, finished it in early 2021, a year behind in the tax roll, so if I sign up for this, I have not, I don't believe we received anything for the taxes that would actually show our house being on the property. How does that work? Are we, is it?
So for your, your first year, because there was a change in ownership, in this case, a change in, a huge change, this year's, and if we can talk to you individually, there's often not smart to do it this first year, because you only, it's based on last year.
Right.
That's all we can base it on, because the first one's due in June, and the only thing we know was last year's tax bill. So for everybody else who hasn't had a major change, it's just last year's tax bill divided by four, but then when the third bill comes due, and after all the taxing authorities have set their rates, and the property priser has set the value, the third and fourth is like a little catch-up, and it's usually not much, because that doesn't change significantly. But it is based on last year's. So yours, in that case, would be based on last year's, which was nominal compared to that. So if you would reach out to us personally, it still may be a value, because your third and fourth then would split it. it's just last year's tax bill divided by four. But then, when the third bill comes due, and after all the taxing authorities have set their rates and the property priser has set the value, the third and fourth is like a little catch-up. And it's usually not much, because that doesn't change significantly. But it is based on last year. So yours, in that case, would be based on last year's, which was nominal compared to that. So if you would reach out to us personally, it still may be a value, because your third and fourth then would split it, which is going to be a large dollar figure coming in.
I went in, I sent a picture of my wife, and I asked her to get it set up on this. That way, we don't have to worry about it. In our case, the ACH would work out perfect. We--
I get that.
Kicking, fighting, and screaming, we're just kind of rolling along with the digital world that's being presented to us. And unfortunately, we are, we've made the shift to cloud-based and all that. So I think eventually, all governmental agencies will be that way.
I think you're right.
But it's going to save a ton of money as well, and legwork.
Absolutely, absolutely. Our biggest, that had the most effect of that was maybe four years ago, we took the old paper file for county-held certificates, which must have-- Oh, one hundred and fifty thousand? Certificates, because they're good for seven years. I mean, there's lots of them. It's probably, that's probably a low number. And that used to be a paper file. It is now digital. And we have seen a significant change in increase of folks using that digital file and purchasing county helps, which is a fabulous opportunity for everybody involved. So that's all good news. But that was our first foray, and we have lots more to share the next time. I do want to thank again Chad and Chris Taylor, because it gave us an opportunity to use the other side. Whenever we do a buck slip, it has to, it doesn't cost us extra money to insert it, because of the weight we're still within. But we have to pay for this, so we have to use it for our office's purpose. It gave us the opportunity to share, folks do not realize, all the Florida state services that are available in our offices. So the front side, of course, is just saying, "Did you know?" And we're going to continue with that. And finally, we're going to let you go on to the next. I know you've got a full agenda. I would say, if I can keep you organized, and I know I can, please hold this dear to your heart, or at least put it on your bookshelf where you can find it. And every time we bring an update, we'll ask you to put it in your folder. We're not going to give you new folders. And that way, if you have any questions about what we've talked about through the year, when somebody calls you or pings you, gosh, I remember they talked about that. You'll have it at your fingertips. With that--
She's very optimistic about you, isn't she?
I can do it.
You can, I know, I know.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can make a folder, if you want, on your desktop. But in the meantime, the rest of us are going to have this. With that, thank you again for the opportunity to share this information. I think it's valuable to our citizens, our taxpayers, and hopefully, it will be helpful to you all as well.
Okay. Thank you, Lynda and Brenda. Commissioner Harvey, you have a question?
No, I just have a comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, because I can't let Crescent City outweigh Interlock. And so you do a great job in the West End. I hear no complaints out there. And even during the COVID situation, it was very hard for you to do business, but you managed to do it anyway. And the citizens just love it out there. It saves them a whole drive in. They can get everything done that they need to get done in your office. And believe me, if there was problems, I would hear about it. I don't hear any problems from your office. So thank you so much for what y'all do in the West End, too. And I will keep my folder. It's a challenge, okay?
So--
So I'll take the challenge head-on.
Please let me thank you for recognizing the talent our team has, branches and the central office. We probably see somewhere between five to six hundred of our taxpayers a day between those offices.
And I want to say--
And it's controversial issues. I mean, they don't necessarily think that that title is worth eighty-five dollars.
And I want to give another plug. You probably don't want me to, but--
But anyways, thank you for recognizing our team.
I had to call, I think, Ms. Brenda, not too long ago, a gentleman that was a longtime resident of West Putnam. Had some life-changing situations happen to him. He had to come down here and take care of business in a very short period of time. And you stepped up. And he went down there and took care of all the problems he needed to take care of. Came by to basically wish me farewell. He'd never, probably ever come back again. His health was not going to allow it. But with tears in his eyes, he just spoke so highly of the work you did for him and took time out of your day. Surely, he wasn't expecting it, but he had to get it done. And that's a testament of your department. So thank you very much.
Again, thanks for the opportunity to be here with you today and for all we do together collectively for Putnam County. And we'll let, that will let you move on.
Can I say one more thing?
Thank you so much.
Probably the only tax collector that's ever been praised in public.
Yeah, the Bible doesn't treat us too nicely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to have, I'm going to push Julianne off until right before the consent agenda with the county projects update. And we'll move down to the public hearings. And before we start, the nine oh five on the land development text, CA twenty twenty-one, twenty-one oh oh five, we have an announcement on the nine thirty, the vacation of Bass Drive. And I appreciate everybody coming up, and I will apologize to you after Administrator Suggs makes this announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board of County Commissioners, the administrator would ask that we pull or table this item for today. We would like to look a little further into actual ownership of this piece of property and then bring it back to you at a future meeting.
Okay. Administrator Suggs, thank you for comments. I personally want to apologize to each and every one of you. I see the faces here, and most of you were there yesterday when I met with you down at this location. I received this information where we made that decision. But I felt that I wanted y'all to come here and see, hear it from our administrator. Our county attorney is here. He may make a comment. And to see if any of the commissioners wanted to make a comment. And I'll allow the applicant to ask a couple of questions, and one representative on the opposing side, if there's one here. But I truly apologize for y'all having to drive all the way up here. But what I did not want to do was to try to get hold of people and not get hold of some and then get hold of some. I apologize for Clay Davis being here, because he was going to be a part of this. But I wanted to make this announcement today rather than at seven thirty last night. So I hope you accept my apology. And we will work on this and move this forward. Staff will be in touch with Mr. Cartwright, who is the applicant. And Mr. Cartwright, I'll give the opportunity to come forward if you want to make a comment before we move on to the other. Want to, Bobby, if you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Robert Cartwright. I'm a petitioner. My address here is one twenty-seven Tennessee Avenue, Crescent City, Florida. So a little harder hearing, so there's some question of title of what?
Rich, you want to--
The property that would be vacated.
That's being vacated, not the, not the purchased, not the property I did purchase.
No, nobody said anything about that.
Okay, so I'm not being offensive. I just want to know what piece. So we got two different little pieces. So then to answer my question is, everybody knows that I feel that the right-of-way issue goes with the property of each side, and that's the question, and no other question. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, we've got to ascertain ownership before we can answer any questions about what we do with the property.
Bobby, there's never been a title search done by the county on that.
And I totally, I totally understand that. And that's, and I don't want to super-discuss the issue today. So let's let y'all get your, your theory of where this is, and then we'll readdress it. I've waited two years. What's a few more months?
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
And I thank you for understanding.
No, no, this is what, when we leave this thing today, tomorrow, next week, or next year, this, we're going to put this thing to rest. So, and I want it to be where nobody has any question about our ability to do our job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other body from River Park? Okay, I appreciate you. I hope you understand this, and this will come before, so it'll be duly noticed at another meeting in the future. But we need to do more research, because we want to make the correct decision. Commissioner Rawls?
Is it possible to get the names of the folks that are here today so they can be notified individually? Or instead of just having to wait and look for a meeting, I doubt we're going to put signs back on the property to re-notify them, but they've, you know, in light of what I've seen from emails and conversations I've had, I think that would be prudent for us to do to reach out to these folks.
How many people from River Park filled out a comment card? Did you have any email address or phone numbers on them? You did? Okay, all right. Okay, all right. We'll put that in the database, and we'll contact you from there. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey, or Commissioner Turner?
I believe that we also need to repost that property with a sign whenever it comes time to do it, in case we miss some people that weren't able to make it this morning, that they would be notified via the new sign.
Mr. Chairman, we'll absolutely follow protocol. It's making sure that we do everything that we're supposed to do to legally advertise it, so people will understand that there's going to be a public hearing on it when the time is right to do so. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Turner. We'll certainly do that.
Okay.
I was just asking if maybe we could do that in addition, too, even though it may not call for it, because we're putting this off-table in this till a future date. If we could maybe just put the rezoning sign, the sign, the cardboard sign that usually goes up there, and maybe we could stick it up there again, just to notify the neighborhood at that time.
I don't see any issue with that. I believe you've got a consensus, and we'll make sure that happens as well, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. And Terry, you may not know this. What is the procedure of people getting notified, not just from the sign, but from a mailing? Is it a certain distance from the property? Is a number of people? How is that? Because some people, when I met with them yesterday, some complained that they didn't get anything. And I understood it was within a hundred, few hundred feet or something like that, if you can clarify that.
I believe that is correct, sir. So we'll make sure, I'll get with Mr. Gabriel's office and make sure that we follow that protocol as well. Anybody that we have an address for on the database, we'll see, we'll make sure they get some type of notification. Now, I believe, Gabriel, correct me if I'm wrong, is it three hundred feet?
I'm researching it now. It's, three hundred is the standard that we have, but I don't know if it calls for more for a vacation of a right-of-way.
Okay. Well, we'll get that information, you know, after the meeting, Mr. Chairman, and we'll make sure that we follow protocol and get the letters mailed out.
Okay. Okay, thank you. You have any comments?
I would think that since this involves an association, they would all be notified. That would be, I think, what would be prudent anyways. Would, do we have a list of everybody in the association? Is it possible to get that, or?
I'm not sure. Our department didn't handle the notification for this. Public Works may have handled it, so--
Oh, okay.
That's correct. I was just verifying what our requirements are for notification. But we'll make sure, if there's an address or a contact for the homeowner association, we can notify them as well. Then hopefully, they'll get it disseminated to their folks in case someone's missed.
It would actually be, y'all don't have a homeowner association, it's a boat club, correct? And the organization, that's what I understood yesterday. So, but I'll get that clarified and get you that.
We'll do the best we can, Mr. Chairman, make sure everybody's notified.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Excuse me, I've got a letter. I recently moved there.
Come up front, come up front, please. State your name and address for the record.
My name is James Johnson. I recently moved to Crescent City in the River Park area and actually have a boat and stuff down there. I'm not real familiar with all the stuff that's going on. I've seen the notices and the right-of-way, the issue. And then granted, there's a lot of different opinions, you know, how you hear things. But like I said, I just was stating that I got a letter from the Public Works Department that, about the hearing, and then also a copy of the BAP, stuff like that, so.
Okay.
And now that they're going to investigate even further, I think it's prudent.
Sir?
I said, I think that's prudent.
Yes, sir, we're going to get some more information and clarify ownership of the land itself.
One of the reasons why I bought the property down there was the accessibility to the water and the boat club and all that. I'm sure that's what a lot of people do, so.
Exactly.
Very nice.
Okay. Okay, sir, thank you. Okay, Gabriel, we'll move down to the first ordinance, CA twenty-one dash oh oh five.
Today, we're going to be hearing about ordinance number twenty-two-two-oh-two. An ordinance by the Board of County Commission amending Article Two, Division Two of the Putnam County Land Development Code to provide criteria for sawmills, including site requirements and agricultural zoning districts where off-site wood is milled, providing for conflict and severability, and providing for an effective date.
Commissioners, are you able to see this on your screens?
We see the same thing you see.
While they're fixing our technical difficulties, I'd like to welcome a special guest today. Mr. Mason Deloach, I see, is over there. Mason, how are you today? Good. Stand up. How tall are you now? Look, when you walked in, it looks like you were catching up with your dad. So glad to have you.
Yeah. You mean login over there? Oh, take this over there?
Go ahead and sit on top.
Mr. Chairman, while we're working this out, could we have a five-minute recess?
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Give me the timer.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm trying to get back out.
You don't sound like you're going to make it. Get through these things. Ask for a recess and go. Try to make it back to the wall.
Could you guys click off of this real quick? When you go off of it? I'm trying to remember how to get back to the, like, to minimize. Okay. There it goes. Okay. Should be good. Has a good charge on it, right? Yeah. Yeah.
So, can you?
Yeah. Let me know.
Thank you.
I want to pause.
Okay.
Okay.
Good morning again, Commissioners, like I said, this is the first reading of ordinance 22, 2022, number two. The ordinance by the Board of County Commissioners amending Article II, Division II of the Putnam County Land Development Code to provide criteria for sawmills, including site requirements and agricultural zoning districts where off-site wood is milled, providing for conflict and severability, and providing for an effective date. Florida statute 12566, this is the first reading of the proposed ordinance for amending language on allowed uses in the Land Development Code. Proposed ordinance is required by state statute to be heard before the Board of County Commissioners twice, one of those hearings is required to be after 5:00 PM on a weekday. Second hearing on this proposed ordinance will be scheduled by the Board of County Commissioners. The application by Justin Morris requesting to amend Article II, Division II, Section 4559, and Article II, Division III, Section 4572, requesting to make a distinction between commercial and personal use sawmills as regulated by the Land Development Code. Subject LDC text amendment proposes to revise allowances for sawmill operations in the agricultural zoning district. LDC currently permits sawmill operations by right in the industrial heavy zoning designation. The current LDC permits sawmills where wood is to be processed and grown from trees on site of the sawmill by special use permit approved in the agriculture zoning district. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the LDC to eliminate current restrictions of the use of sawmill as a commercial agriculture-related use in the ag zoning district. Applicant proposes to eliminate the prohibition on the bringing of logs from off-site for use in the sawmill. Applicant further proposes to permit any sawmill as commercial ag-related use to be restricted only based on the horsepower of said sawmill. Additionally, the proposed text amendment would add an additional use to be called sawmills for personal use under the allowances by right for the ag zoning district with the same horsepower limitation for the motor. So essentially, you can see here, the strike through underlined 4559, the applicant chose to remove where wood is grown from trees on site of the sawmill, and to change that to where the sawmill is powered by a motor not to exceed 40 horsepower. This is the commercial ag-related section, which requires a special use permit. Additionally, they would like to include a certain use allowed in the ag district by right for sawmills for personal use where the sawmill is powered by a motor not to exceed 40 horsepower. Staff recommends denial of the proposed changes as presented by the applicant. It's the position of the staff that the proposal would continue to protect residential and agricultural uses on ag-zoned lands while providing an additional avenue by which the landowner may operate a sawmill with special use approval without the wood sourcing restriction. So, staff has proposed is that we change with the special use permit, we have both on-site and off-site, so the existing code would remain, we would just add on-site sawmills where the wood is grown from trees on site, and we would also have an off-site sawmill section where the wood may be grown on or off-site. Off-site sawmills must abide by the following supplemental standards. The sawmill must be located on a parcel of land equal to or exceeding 15 acres. An off-site sawmill operation must be set back 500 foot from all property lines. The sawmill is required to be located on a county-maintained collector or arterial road, and must not require significant non-residential traffic to pass through established neighborhoods. So the reason that we looked at it like this was, the majority of the ag-zone property in Putnam County, a lot of it is residential use, and in theory, one could just open up a sawmill shop on a property that's maybe an acre, acre and a half, in a subdivision that has been established for residential use. Staff does recognize that there may be site-zoned agriculture that would be appropriate for sawmill use, where wood may be brought from off-site. To accommodate this possible use, staff proposes an additional use for the commercial ag-related uses, which is still subject to the approval of a special use permit. Furthermore, the setback distance of 500 foot was something that we came up with. By looking at sound levels in a normal subdivision of 55 to 60 decibels, we used an OSHA study that states that machinery associated with sawmills operates between 95 and 110 decibels. In sound measurement, the inverse square law describes the reduction of the intensity of sound over distance. A common way of expressing the inverse square law in acoustics is further explained in OSHA Technical Manual, Section 3, Chapter 5, Subsection 2B6. Is that in a free field, sound pressure measured in decibels decreases six decibels each time the distance from that point source is doubled. Therefore, the level of sound outside of a residence that is a distance of 512 foot from the point of sound, i.e. the sawmill, separated by only free land, assuming that at one foot of distance, the sound is measured at 110 decibels, would theoretically be 56 decibels. So that's that breakdown of why we're requiring the setback. This text amendment was heard at the Planning Commission on February 9, 2022, where they voted unanimously to recommend denial of both the applicant's and staff's recommendation on the LDC text amendment. Again, staff's recommendation, any such sawmill operation would be required to be reviewed and by and receive approval from the Development Review, and may be required to provide roadway improvements to maintain minimum adopted levels of service and minimum facility standards as allowed by Article 5 of the Land Development Code and the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends approval of staff suggested LDC revisions to Section 4559. Any questions?
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Adams, act?
Yeah, so I have several questions. The first thing I want to note is that I did serve with Justin Morris on the Contractors' Board prior to becoming County Commissioner, and it will not affect the way I vote today, but I just wanted to make that out there. Currently, if, let's say I wanted to buy a sawmill and put it on my property, is just something, I'm going to cut some trees on my property, what, do I have to do a special use permit?
No, sir, so if you have a sawmill that's ancillary to the primary use of that property, if it's just purely a hobby, you wouldn't need to do anything.
So this is only for someone's going to utilize a sawmill to resell product, or to, so not personal use? So currently, there's no restrictions, acreage or anything else like that, on a regular resident? I mean, with the price of lumber and stuff, there's several people I know that are looking into buying these, I know where there are several already in operation, so I just want to make sure those people aren't affected by this.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. My only concern about the horsepower part, which I guess you guys got rid of that, would be, a lot of these sawmills operate off of a tractor, like, for instance, my tractor's 55 horsepower, so what I'm looking at would be operate off a 55 horsepower motor, which in fact would be quieter than the one that's on a standalone sawmill, because my tractor doesn't make a lot of noise, but it has the power at the PTO to run it. So I'm totally against limiting it by horsepower, looks like you guys removed that. Then my only other concern is the 500 feet from all property lines. I get the noise, but I'd rather have a time restriction on that, like from 9:00 AM till 7:00 PM, something like that. It is normal for noise to occur off agricultural land for agricultural uses, and a big portion of agricultural land is forest. I think we need to look upon that favorably, because unfortunately, we don't grow a whole ton of crops here in Putnam County, we grow a lot of trees. We just had, they just got an award for their tree farm there today. I know of no one really growing many crops outside of blueberries near where I live, most of them are harvesting logs, and some of them do utilize them on-site, and you know, I don't want to take that ability away from someone, let's say they get, someone gets a cypress log one time to bring it into somebody, I don't want them not to be able to utilize that log, there's, this seems a little bit overbearing to me, but I'll hear what other Commissioners have to say now.
Okay, before I go to Commissioner Turner, with a personal sawmill that I would buy and put in my yard, and I can cut my own wood, trees growing on my property, is there a horsepower restriction there, now?
No, sir, we do not have a horsepower restriction.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Turner?
I have several questions, and I imagine some of these would have been answered last week if I had have been able to meet with staff, but our schedules just wouldn't get together on it, so my apologies if any of these are something that you would have covered. First of all, I think we need to keep in mind here that there's, I'll bet you at least 20 to 30% of the subdivisions in Putnam County are zoned ag, and a lot's in them are zoned ag. How would you like to build you a house in a one-acre subdivision zoned ag, or even a three-acre subdivision zoned ag, and the next-door neighbor comes in and opens a sawmill? I don't care if it's for them, I don't care if it's for a hobby, I don't care especially to bring wood in and make it a commercial venture. The only way that I see that can be adjusted, the only way that I see that can be adjusted would be to make it a special use permit, where you have a Citizens Board that can go in there and say, oh, yes, you have 85 acres, and your sawmill's going to be 300 feet from anybody, and, you know, or 300 feet from anybody's land, but their house is on the other side of their 85 acres, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't affect them, because, well, one of my fundamental beliefs is that Mr. Morris has the right to do whatever with his land that he possibly could do with, as long as he's not affecting somebody else who has the same right next door. So I believe that to be the case. Is it allowed by special permit now?
Yes, sir. It is allowed, in agriculture, though, there's a restriction on the sourcing of the wood, so you can...
I understand, well, I might would take that off, the sourcing of the wood doesn't bother me much, I don't care if you buy it from me, or buy it from a neighbor, or use it off my own property, that's not the part that bothered me personally, it's that you can't bring it in there and operate a sawmill in an area, is the part that bothers me. So, I, as long as you have a Citizens Board that's making sure that somebody can't abuse all our neighbors, if I got mad at my neighbor and I was in an ag-zoned area, I'd go buy me a sawmill just to upset him. I mean, I'm serious here, that happens, y'all may laugh and giggle, but it happens. So, and that's why we have zoning laws for those kind of things. So, the requested, the staff requested, what the changes, the new changes that staff's requested, is that, were those changes presented after the Planning Commission?
They were presented at the Planning Commission.
At the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir.
So basically, the Planning Commission turned down both y'all's changes and said, just leave it alone?
Correct, they wanted to, they really didn't make... They wanted to, they really didn't make much of a judgment on staff's. I know their motion was to deny the recommendation by the applicant, but they didn't really consider staff's. But in not considering it, they effectively, well, didn't deny it, but didn't issue a recommendation on it.
Never mind. I'm counting to three where I don't say something stupid. As usual. So the recommendation at this time from staff wasn't really talked about at the Planning Commission?
Well, no. It was. We spoke about it at length. They just didn't-
They didn't agree that you ought to be able to go find, because I believe you should ask, if you wanted to build a pigpen next to the courthouse, you should be able to ask somebody, could you? Chances are, you'd never get something like that, and you shouldn't. Because that's what the epitome of zoning laws are. But you should still have the opportunity to go ask somebody to do that. So, and I think this is one of those same situations, and this isn't aimed at Mr. Morris in any way whatsoever. Anyone that wants to do something with their property ought to have somebody they can go ask and say, can I do this or not? And then you've got to trust in your citizen boards. You've got to trust in the ZBOA to make the proper decision, and the Planning Commission to make the proper decision. So the part of it where you can just have a sawmill on any ag piece property in Putnam County, I'll adamantly defend, we should not do that. That is not, I would not want somebody building a sawmill next to my house because they're mad at me. But the part that gives that person the right to ask to put a sawmill next to their house and go ask the ZBOA for a special permit, that's a different story to me. So I think that's about as plain as I can be about it, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, that was the intent of staff's allowance, to allow an applicant to come forward with certain criteria judged by the ZBOA if they wanted to source the wood from offsite, which is not currently permitted. So it would be to broaden that allowance.
But if I may, I think that was an answer to my question. So if I may, so what you're saying is if we change it to where you could bring it from offsite, you still would have to get a special use permit-
Yes.
-in order to have a sawmill?
Correct.
Because there are times in this county where agricultural type lands would be a great place to have a small sawmill and with the wood brought in from offsite. But those areas need to be selected and looked at and studied by the plant, by the ZBOA with, through the special exception process, and make sure that they're a good place to have a sawmill.
Yes.
Because we can't just have sawmills in industrial areas only, especially-
Right.
...small sawmills that you would use to cut lumber for a building business or a whatever, not a large commercial venture.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams Act?
Yeah, and I think my reading of this, that's what you're trying to do, is give something that allows the ZBOA to decide if it's a feasible location. So I appreciate that part of it. Again, I think that number one and number two kind of conflict each other, because it's going to be hard for a fifteen acre site to be five hundred feet from all property lines. It's almost impossible, almost fifteen acre sites, because they're either narrow and long, or wide and narrow. The way it's written, I'm not, I won't stand for this. I'm on page ninety. I just don't think that it allows for enough possible uses. Probably the best locations aren't on an arterial road. They're probably on some dirt road where someone owns five hundred acres and they own most of the road as well. So I don't want that in there either, to be a restriction against it. I'd rather, like Commissioner Turner said, allow the ZBOA to make those determinations on a per-site basis. I do like what Commissioner Turner said about it being a certain distance from a building. I mean, that makes sense. I don't want it five hundred feet from my house, per se. But I think if we limited the times of operation, I think that's more applicable in this case, and that's what I've seen in other locations that I've lived, and I have had a sawmill-
In addition to?
No, separate, in place of.
It'd be good as an in addition to, or along with, or something like that.
Yeah, so I'm looking at changing five hundred feet from property lines from buildings. So just changing that, I don't know, and I don't know if that's acceptable to the Commission. And then in addition to that, then, would be the requirement of operation hours. How's that? And I don't like number three at all, only because I think most of the best use scenarios are locations that are not on arterial roads. Just my opinion.
If I may, I'm sorry. If I may address number three, Mr. Chairman, the reason we included that in there is simply because of the log trucks. If it's not on a county maintained collector or arterial road, and they're using an easement or something else that we can't be assured of maintenance on, they could create just destruction of the road because of the weight, or potholes, and then affect other people.
So I'll say this. I had my property logged, and I'm on the easement. And it's my job as the easement owner to remediate whatever damage is done. So, and it should be part of your contract with whatever logger, whoever's trucking it in, if you're a good businessperson, to make sure that's part of your performance contract as well. So maybe we could put some language in there pertaining to that, but then I think it's getting pretty convoluted. But I think any neighbor in good faith is going to do that with their easement, and they're probably need their easement for their ingress and egress, so they're not going to have some log truck coming through the easement and make it so they can't get access to their law, their sawmill. That's kind of counterintuitive. But again, number three, I can't do, but thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So right now, if I went down to wherever and bought me a little portable sawmill, I could go out to my lot, cut my own trees, saw my own wood, correct?
Correct.
As long as I didn't bring your wood to my property, we're in good shape.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
So we're only talking really a commercial type business here.
Yes.
And I have to agree with Commissioner Adams Act and Commissioner Turner. Horsepower, I think we can dump that for certain reasons, and I do believe the tractor, most tractors are quieter than engines are that are, like, well, I'm not going to name names. I do like the times of operation. I would also like to get rid of item three, number three. Sometimes the loggers tear up our county maintained roads, and we have to go out there at our expense and fix them. Although we ask them to do it, they don't always do that. And so I think that that could be eliminated there. And I do like the idea that they go before the ZBOA group of their peers to request a special use permit, and then if there's any restrictions, I'm not so sure I like the five hundred feet either. I think that might be a little bit too much. You know, in agriculture area, you kind of, you kind of, I don't want to say enjoy those sounds, but you know those sounds are coming. That's what you live in that area for. I remember when I first got here, we had a restriction on generators, and I was like, why do we have a restriction on generators with hurricanes? You want to hear those generators fire up in the neighborhood, because you want to go to the house and take a bath if you can't. You know what I'm saying? Or you want to go grab something to eat because they got refrigeration. I mean, you kind of, there's certain noises you want to hear at certain times, and you're used to that, you know? We can't live in an island by ourselves. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Before I go to Commissioner Turner, I agree with all of these, and the horsepower, I don't think's a big deal. One thing I am concerned with, and each one of these things would have an enforcement mechanism, whether it's, you know, the roads, or the setbacks, all those type things. But in my area, people irrigate with diesel motors, okay? And they're loud. And some people have put these together, and they don't have adequate muffler system. So something needs to be addressed in there about the noise, because Commissioner Adams Act's tractor might be quiet, but Commissioner Harvey's may not be quiet, okay? And it may be an old gas motor with, that backfires and those type of things. So that needs to be in there addressed also. Commissioner Turner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The five hundred feet is probably not as necessary as a minimum, as long as it's still got to go to the Planning Commission, I mean, the ZBOA. Because the ZBOA can set those minimums in that meeting. They can set what the minimum is, so they may find a spot somewhere to where if they're, if someone owns two pieces of property, for instance, and both pieces of property are a hundred acres, if we give them a five hundred foot setback, even though they own both of those pieces of property, they'd have setback from the property to the partial property line. So that, I don't, instead of putting it right in the middle of his two hundred acres, so that, I don't think that's, I'm in agreement with the other commissioners that that's really not a big deal. The, as long as it can be, those different items can be set by the, by the ZBOA when it gets there. But I do think we need to have something in there for sound, something. Because Commissioner Pickens is absolutely spot on. When, when you're running a sawmill that doesn't run but six days a year, you don't really care if the muffler works real good on it or not, you got some earplugs. Your neighbors may not have earplugs for the two hundred and fifty feet around you that, or even further, that this would be so loud. Reminds me of the time, and I hate to bring this up, I'll probably get a stare. But the, reminds me of the time that we turned down a motorcycle track-
You were just reading my mind.
...because of noise.
That's impossible.
We turned, I told you I'd get the stare.
I just wrote that down.
Yeah, I got one from him, too. So it wasn't just you, Julie, and it was also him. But anyhow, it reminds me of the same thing. It's all, a lot of it is all about the noise. So I think there's some way, if we're going to do this, we got to be able to, and in my commissioner comments today, I'm going to go ahead and start the thing now, because it's directly pertinent to what we're talking about. Willaka came up with a noise ordinance. I don't know if it's going to work or not.
Was that?
The town of Willaka. The town of Willaka. I noticed it the other day. I saw it somewhere. I don't even know where now at this point, but they came up with it and passed it. I think maybe it was in the paper. And so they came up with certain decimals for different things. Well, if they can do it, then I think we can start looking at it again, because it wasn't that long ago, we just felt like we couldn't come up with one that would be enforceable. And if that's still the case, then fine, that be that. But I just don't think, I think we've got to have something in there, even if we don't put it on their noise, that the engines have to be in good working order, or the exhaust systems have to remain in good working order, where they can't just pull the muffler off the thing and just let it fire straight pipe. I mean, because it, we're all young enough, we remember how that was on our hot rods back when we was kids. It was pretty noisy.
And now we're getting paid back.
Exactly. So anyhow, I think we should put something in for noise. The five hundred foot thing doesn't bother me at all, to take it out. The, and the other thing, we need to have something in there for a road. In other words, maybe we could tackle it from just a little different angle. That they, that for the private road that's owned, from wherever the end of the county maintained road is, from the private, from the private road, from there to their sawmill, they have to either own that road, or they have to have a maintenance agreement on that road, one or the other. That way, they can't go in there and take, let it be a big rain like they did out there one time off of Yelvinton Road, and they were cutting timber, and they had a big rainstorm, and that road still ain't right. And it's been three years ago, and he spent money, he dug the ditches, he rated it out, the logger did. I mean, I'm telling you, he's tried, but it ain't been right, because it was in such bad shape when they tore it up with them log trucks that day. And so, and it was all within a two-day period of time. So I think we do need something in there for the protection of not just his roads, but if he's driving on his neighbor's road to get into his sawmill, whoever he or she, then that need, we need to make sure that that neighbor's protected, that we don't allow them by statute just to drive on that road without either a maintenance agreement or they own that road, one or the other. So that's just fair, I think. So anyhow, those would be the two things, Mr. Chairman. I think we got to do something about noise, and I think we've got to do something, and it could be handled just as easily probably by saying something like, the muffler systems on the sawmill must be in place as originally designed, or something. You know, so, and we've got to do something with the roads. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Rawl?
I agree with everything that's being tossed around. I wrote a note here that enforcement is going to be difficult, and I'm not sure who would be able to enforce it and what we'd be able to put in place. And the Sheriff's Department is not going to want to go out there with the decimal meter and do that. I don't know that code enforcement are going to have the time to do it. So I think it's just something we need to, if we're going to do this, we need to be able to have some sort of enforcement method, so we don't have people coming in saying, you set me up, you know, you said that y'all were going to restrict this, and now you're not enforcing it. And I could think of at least one person that we've heard from more than once.
Jeff, are you talking about the sound ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay, so I-
The noise levels.
I wish I hadn't even brought that up yet, because I don't want this to go down that path. I'm trying to keep it on the subject, but I was, I did have that in to talk about later on today, but I was trying to keep it-
No, it's definitely, it's definitely germane to this conversation.
Absolutely.
And I agree with you. When you mentioned the motorcycle track in Boswick, there, you know, the part of the problem that I was told was that these folks want to bring people in from, out of, in some cases, out of country to be able to practice their riding, and the noise is going to be unbearable. You know, there's a customer I'm working with right now that just bought a hundred and ten acres, and they want to have a farm, and they're going to build multiple buildings on it, and, you know, we're talking agricultural property, but they're going to divide it and put a staff house on there for somebody to maintain the farm, and then their own house. And so you, you know, the question is if they decided to get into a business that was loud, or if they had to put an irrigation pump in that was loud, I think we just need to be very deliberate in how we get on this road. I'm definitely in favor of the suggested changes, but I think that this, this will be the precursor to many other activities. And I asked Mr. Commando if he knew what the definition of cottage industry is, because the state is tossing that around right now. You have your cottage food industry. This could become one of those cottage industries if we're not careful. The other day, I bought a woodcar flag from a gentleman at the fair. He's making those in his shop and selling them at the fair and other events. So it's just going to be one of those slippery slopes, but I don't want to preclude somebody from having the ability to be able to come in and saw lumber. You know, it's always been a peeve of mine, and I've been responsible for the destruction of many trees and hauling off a lot of trees. I always said, I hate to see this oak tree go, you know, where somebody could use it, or a big cedar tree. But I just think we need to be very careful here.
Okay. Commissioner Adams Act?
I agree with Commissioner Turner on the sound. I think if you put it towards the proper equipment, maintained equipment with proper exhaust, I think that adequately answers that question. So and I don't think a commercial operation is going to use one of those chainsaw driven ones. I would hope not, but that would be loud as well. And I don't know how you would measure that, but it's neither here nor there. So what's the next step? Would they rewrite something based on our feedback and bring it back to us, or?
That's what I was going to say, is it okay with everybody? We've given them some suggestions, and staff would come up with a recommendation. Now would this go back to the Planning Commission for review, and then come back to us?
Yeah, if everybody, if everybody agrees that we do want to see a little change here, or that a little change is justified, and we pretty much agree to what we're talking about, and I think we have here, I haven't heard anybody that was against any, really hard bore against any industries or ideas, so maybe we ask the Planning Commission to take another look at it. I would, I would feel a lot more comfortable doing that than just coming in here and overturning the Planning Commission's decision. That's hard for me to do. So I, I think that's what I'd like to see, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to see it go back to the Planning Commission-
Agreement.
-and ask them to take a look at it again.
Okay.
And with the changes that we've discussed here today, you didn't get all you wanted, he didn't get all he wanted, but we've made an avenue that it could happen in.
Mr. Chairman?
You're going to get, you're going to get a chance, Mr. Morris.
May I address a few points that were made? So on the Planning Commission issue, we would, staff would just need consensus on what issues need to be resolved and what the recommendation is to, there were many points brought up, so-
Can I try that?
On the issue of the motor, though, I have- On the issue of the motor, though, I have to, um, I just caution that code enforcement is not really equipped to, to enforce that.
Mr. Chairman, Gabriel, if I can cut you off for just a second. Uh, given that, I understand where you folks are wanting to go with this, and so, uh, if it's amenable to the, to the commissioners, I think we got enough direction as some of their concerns and, and comments from here this morning to bring something back and draft something. And then if we need to, we can meet with you individually, and then take it back to the planning board, uh, to see if we can keep this thing processing through, if that's okay. We can discuss the, uh, the sound ordinance issues later, uh, but for now, I wanna keep this thing moving forward.
While it's relevant, like Commissioner Rawl says, it's relevant, but it's not part of this discussion other than it's relevant, because that's a whole different can of worms we're gonna open up.
Yes, sir, we are, so if it's okay, I think we can go back and, and take the recommendations that we've heard from all five of you here this morning, and, and start working up something with Mr. Quintus and his staff. And then, uh, prior to bringing it back to the planning board, uh, I think it'll be, uh, understandable if we were to sit down with each of you and make sure we captured what it is that you're looking for, and then re-advertise and go back to the planning board.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, if I may, the, just to be clear on the points, the points were the, um, that number two be changed, um, to, from buildings.
Eliminated.
Eliminated altogether? Okay, so then, um, address sound in another manner.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I just understood our administrator's gonna get with you.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna get with you individually, so I don't think we need to hash out all those points right now.
And you can contact each commissioner, you know, and just say, hey, does this sound like, you know, everything that we talked about, so.
Okay.
Okay, so this takes care of, of one of the items, is that, um, we don't have to, we're not gonna move forward y'all's recommendation, we're gonna have you work on the recommendation. Now the task at hand is whether we're gonna move forward the recommendation by Mr. Morse, is that correct?
Now the task at hand is what now, sorry?
Whether we're gonna move forward the, the.
Correct.
The, uh, recommendations from Mr. Morse.
Yes, sir, that's right.
All right, okay, I'm gonna ask Mr. Morse to come up. He's the applicant, and I'll have a public comment after that. Uh, Mr. Morse, I know that you've already been through the planning commission and had a, you know, a detailed presentation.
Yes, sir.
And it looks like they unanimously turned that recommendation down, and then staff has not recommended either, so I was just wondering if you wanna give us some points on any changes?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna.
Just give you a few minutes, we don't need a, a whole long PowerPoint at all today. We just need, uh, maybe anything that you have, have maybe changed, or might shed some light on this.
Let me start off by saying it's frustration, frustrating that they can come up here and give thirty or forty-five minutes of their side of the story without, and then I just get cut off. I can tell from the conversation thus far that you guys have relatively made up your minds, give or take a little bit of movement. Let me say also that what is going on, and the, the, the views and the opinions of what you guys are calling sawmills, shows a complete misunderstanding, as does, uh, planning development about what a sawmill, what, what the sawmills we're trying to deal with here are. The, the whole purpose of this presentation and this land development code change was, is not to make it where anybody can have any kind of sawmill that they want. We, and the reason for the forty horsepower restriction is because that is the easiest place to delineate between personal use and commercial, and it's also the easiest place to delineate for sound without having to have an individual go out and survey the site and determine buffers and all that. Forty horsepower motor is no different than lawnmowers on your residential zero-turn lawnmowers. No generators, I mean, a forty horsepower is not large enough to, can you conduct some sort of commercial operation with a forty horsepower motor? Yes, if you dedicated every minute and ran that, that machine at its maximum, you possibly could turn it into a commercial operation, but that is not the case. The bulk of the sawmills that under forty horsepower, ninety-nine percent of them, are personal-use sawmills in people's backyards, where they're getting wood from their neighbor or their local tree surgeon, or just by-product wood. They're not bringing in, they're not bringing in semi-trucks of wood, they're not bringing in loader trucks of wood. Nine times out of ten, they come in on a car trailer and they have to unload individual logs. So the biggest problem in this entire operation is that not, and it's, it's not y'all's fault, it's everybody's fault. They see the word sawmill, and that's, that's what they associate. They associate one, they put sawmills in one box, and that's not the case here. We have industrial sawmills in the county, we have personal-use sawmills, and to lump all that under one category is, does a disservice to the citizens of Putnam County. There's too many people in this county that are self-sufficient and want to do these things. They want, they want to be, they want to do the things on their own. So the, the, it is important, it is paramount, that the board understands that there is a way to answer your problems. You, you gave the example of a fifty-five horsepower tractor being quieter than one of these motors. That's true, but you know that they power circular saw, commercial circular sawmills with tractors, with tractor motors off of PTO shafts. That is a, even though that's quieter, doesn't mean that it is representative of what's going on in the lower classifications. Fifty-five horsepower still needs to have, regardless of whether it's a tractor or whatever, still needs to have a special use permit assigned to it. I understand that, and by no means am I trying to get up here and say that we should not be assigning special use permits to sawmills over forty horsepower. That is not, that is not the intent of this land development code change. That I have, I have, I understand everything that you guys set up here today, and I absolutely agree with everything that's set up here, as that pertains to sawmills greater than forty horsepower. When it gets below forty horsepower, all the problems that you guys have, all, every issue that you guys just mentioned about having with sawmills, traffic, sound, uh, commercial viability, all those things go away when you get below forty horsepower on a sawmill. And that's, that's, and that is the uphill battle that I have fought this whole way. The other thing that is misleading right from jump was you guys asked, if I bring a little sawmill to do my stuff at my house, is there anything that regulates against it? The answer to that question is there absolutely is. There, there, there is only one place in the entire land development code where the word sawmill appears, and that is in a commercial agriculture use category. Everywhere else that you would put a sawmill, an industrial-level sawmill, requires an interpretation of the code. That cannot, you can't project that one classification of sawmill into everything. So we need to define, and, and in that class, in that use category, the only definition of that is sawmill where trees are grown from the land that the sawmill's on, which is not viable for any sawmill that's in operation. So I'd be happy to go through this individually or whatever. I'm, I'm, I'm kinda upset that I didn't get any calls on this. Unfortunately, I didn't understand, uh, some of the procedural stuff, and I appreciate Gabriel making the phone call this morning, otherwise I wouldn't have been, I didn't know that I had to be here until an hour ago. So I'm, I'm fairly unprepared, and I apologize for that. But at the same time, the importance of this land development code is for the individuals that are not trying to be commercial. The, the, the use of a special advisory board, a citizens' board to review this and that. Let me tell you, I've been through applications for special use permit, I've been through the planning commission, and for a citizen who has no involvement with government entities, it is a daunting task to put all the paperwork together, and then have the ability to get up here in front of a, 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 um, a board that can be intimidating, and more intimidating to people that don't have any sp- public speaking experience. To go through that procedure is, from the, from the citizen's side, almost impossible. It's easy for you guys, cause you guys do this every month. It's easy for them, cause they get paid forty hours a week to prepare for this stuff. But from this side of the table, this side of the bench, this is a difficult process to go through, whether for this land development code change, or special use permit, or, I mean, for you guys, it says, well, we'll let the, we'll let a citizens' board review each case. But the time and money and stress that are involved with that procedure, with those procedures, are extremely taxing on the citizens. So I, the presentation that I was gonna give shows, it shows two aerial photos in it.
How long, how long is it? How long's your presentation? And I apologize if you think I'm gonna cut you off, how long's the presentation?
It's probably fifteen or twenty minutes. I, and I, I'm, and I can, I can touch, I, I mean, I'm not even looking at it, but I, it's, I'm so involved with this.
Okay, all right.
Justin, I'm, I'm having a harder time understanding what specifically your issue is with what we were talking about. Cause we were talking about a specific part of.
The issue I have is that, that, the, the, the word sawmill lumps everything into one category. And the, the people that are using these personal-use sawmills, they, most of them would fit in the bed of a truck. The problem I have is, planning and zoning came in here and said, oh, no, we don't, we don't, we don't have issue with people with personal-use sawmills, but they absolutely do. Because if they get a complaint from the neighbor, the first, and this is, and I know, because I've been through a special use permit on a commercial sawmill, the first thing that happens when they get a complaint from the neighbor is codes enforcement goes to the book, and they, and they, oh, it's a sawmill, let's see what we have to do about it. So they go through the thing, and then the whole land development code, since sawmill only appears in one place, they're required to have a special use permit. Well, everybody that has a twelve, fourteen-foot-long hobby sawmill would fall into that definition generated by a complaint from the neighbor. And that's not how it should be, that's not, that's not how it should be. I understand larger-scale, commercial-grade sawmills should be regulated, there's no denying that. But we are talking about a completely different facet.
Justin.
Of mill, of wood production.
Excuse me, Commissioner Harvey, are you done with that?
I, I have a question for Gabriel, and I apologize, and you may have the same question. I thought we already mentioned that if they're using it for private use, logs on land, that they can have a sawmill on agricultural land.
Correct, that, that's correct.
It's already allowed, cause it's not, it's allowed by not being disallowed, is that, that's how I understand it.
No, 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 it falls under the cat, the use category of commercial ag-related, and in the, and in the section where it talks previously about.
But that's for a special use permission, for if you're bringing logs from off-site.
Let's not get in a debate on it, so Gabriel, you wanna answer the question?
Yes.
And I, and I'm gonna stop you just for a minute, cause every commissioner wants to ask you some questions, okay?
So currently, the personal use of a saw for personal purposes as an ancillary use to single-family residents is not regulated by the land development code. And we don't want to get into regulation of that, because it could inhibit certain, um, activities that people should be able to have on their property. As long as they're not creating a nuisance, there should be no reason that a code enforcement case is filed. Now, the other thing, the other question about the, the special use permit, so currently in agriculture, if you wish to run a commercial sawmill operation, you do have to get a special use permit for that, and it can only be wood sourced on-site. Uh, but for personal purposes, that's not regulated by the code.
Okay, Commissioner Adams, any more?
I guess I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Turner, or Commissioner Harvey was next, and then Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, um.
Can I respond to that one time before I take that question?
That's up to the chairman.
Um.
Yes, you can respond.
Yeah, so his clarification there does not take into the account the opinions of the citizens who feel like there's an overbearing, okay, so if I called up here and I said.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think it's proper that Mr. Morse can sit there and talk to our staff like that.
Well, he's talking to me, he's giving an opinion to me, and then I'm, I'll stop the debate.
It's nothing personal against Gabriel, it's just how I feel that some of this stuff's being interpreted.
I understand, but it's your interpretation versus theirs, and unfortunately, in this forum, it ain't your turn.
All right, Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Harvey?
Wait, however.
Justin, Mr. Morse, let me ask you this. You said ninety-nine percent of the people you deal with have personal sawmills, and this doesn't affect them. Okay, you said that earlier, you said anything under forty horsepower, it should just automatically be taken care of. You did mention a second ago that your biggest complaint, the complaint you had was codes on a commercial sawmill. You didn't mention personal. And the reason I'm going there is this, people, neighbors turn in neighbors all day long. You, you worked over there, you know what, you know this.
Absolutely.
For no, for garbage on the ground, for whatever reason, they're mad about this, and they're mad about that. But I couldn't bring in a little sawmill on my property, and I know that. I can't, I don't have enough room to do that. But if I, if I had some room, and I was in ag, and I wanted to saw up my own wood, it's not a problem, okay? I've done that before, where I've actually cut some cedar trees down and hauled them off to go get them sawed off, you know, to another location, cause I can't do it on my property. I don't see a problem with that, I really don't. And, and honestly, I've been here eight years now, and you're the first one that's ever come to me complaining about a sawmill situation. We haven't had, I used to insure some of those sawmills as an insurance agent. Never, never once have I gotten a complaint in West Putnam that somebody's upset about my sawmill. It, it's not happening. So my question to you, if you don't mind, is what, what brings you here today? Were you turned down for a sawmill application?
Absolutely not.
Or are you sticking up for the industry? Is that how you're?
I'm sticking up for about a dozen people that I know that own them, that if they had the, that, and part of it is a misconceived notion. They, they saw a special use permit get issued to a, a commercial-level sawmill, but that SUP, the, 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 the generation of that SUP started from a codes case. Neighbors complained that the sawmill was there, it was a portable sawmill, slightly larger than what you would see on a personal hobby level, and everybody immediately was scared that those, that, that that would happen to them. There's, and the thing that prompted that was, there's no distinction in the land development code that addresses small mills, small-scale mills. There's no way to differentiate between any of the sawmills. There also is nothing that addresses sawmills, not one thing that addresses sawmills, that where the wood comes from off-site.
Okay, so let me interrupt you, let me interrupt you real quick.
And the zoning board of adjustment had a difficulty with that.
All right, real quick, you want us to identify what's a personal sawmill versus a commer, that's what your goal here is today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you got that, Gabriel?
And remove the, the requirement of the SUP.
Right, okay. All right, Commissioner Turner?
Okay, you know, I understand you're upset, I get it. Um, but the land development code, you know this, you're not a, you're not a newbie at this. You've done this longer than I've done it, as far as being involved in government, and you are past building inspector, and I think a code enforcement officer, and you're working with Willaka now is the same, and so you're not new at this, Justin. So the, the point that I'm making, the land development code's number-one thing that they're there for is to protect the welfare and the health of the neighbors, where I can't buy a piece of property in the middle of a subdivision and go set up my stuff. If it's a five-acre property, even if I can only cut the stuff on my property, even a, even a four-horse sawmill runs off a chainsaw. That son of a gun can be heard if you go out there in my, in the parking lot out front, and I'll crank up a chainsaw, and you, if you'll be honest about it, you tell me if you can hear it out there at the old Miller supermarket store. Now, that's less than forty horsepower, but I don't, that should be, only be allowed for a short period of time on somebody's property that they're cutting their own wood for their own use. That's it, that's my opinion. Not your opinion, I understand, that's my opinion. Um, the other thing is, is that the, um, is that if, if we don't build things in here, as much, there's no, in the forty years I've been involved in politics in this county, I've never seen a commission that's as conservative on land use issues as what the five people up here today are, not once, and you can't either. So I'm telling you, we've still got to have protections for the citizens of this county, we've got to.
I, I, I agree with that.
And the only way that we can build them in is to have some. And the only way that we can build them in is to have some type of, I want you to be able to do, or any other citizen, to be able to do what they want to do with their property. But not at the expense of all the other people in the neighborhood, or all the adjacent landowners, or whether it's you or one of your other friends that have a sawmill. So, you know, normally, if we weren't trying to work something out, I feel that we would have just upheld the recommendation of the planning commission. This would have been over today. I'll tell you that right now. It was hard for me not to do that coming in here, because there's so many reasons why you could just do that.
Right.
Instead of asking the, our volunteer citizens' board to go and take another look at this again. And they may come back to the same thing again and say, look, we just can't get there, guys. But at least we've asked our planning authority to take another look at it, and if they will, then great. You know, and if they can't get, come up with any better other way to get there than what we are right now, I'm not voting for it in the form that's in right now. I'd just uphold the recommendations of the planning commission.
I, I, I agree with the, with the direction some of their changes are going, but they're overbearing in, in my opinion. Okay.
You and I, you, you and I both understand, we, because we're not that far apart in personalities here. We don't like anybody telling us what to do, period.
Right.
So anybody that tells us what to do is overbearing. I get it. Me too. I'm with you.
Well-
But, so that, they're just, they're just interpreting, strictly interpreting the land development code. And just because, I disagree with them many more times than you do on their interpretations, but I don't know that I've ever won one of them in the seven years I've been here, or the five years I've been here. I don't think I've ever won one, but I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so in all the scenarios that would be prescribed with their, with their revisions, there is a special use permit required. That, that's, that's the, 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 the two hangups I have is, number one, there should be an avenue where we could have personal use mills without having to have a special use. And number two, there should be-
You can't have that?
There, no, there should, and that's, that's my second point. Number two, there should be a way that a citizen of Putnam County who wishes to buy one can call down here and say, I'm about to purchase such-and-such mill, I would like to put it on my property. Am I okay to do that? And there'd be somewhere that somebody can put their finger on some language that says, yes, you can.
Well, don't we have that, Justin?
No, we do not. We absolutely do not. Everything that-
I thought that we were told-
Everything that Gabriel's talking about is an interpretation.
I was told this morning that we have the language in the existing land code right now that allows a personal sawmill for on-site wood on your property to cut that wood without bringing in any commercial wood off the property. Is that correct?
The language that we have is for a commercial sawmill. So personal sawmills are not currently regulated by the code.
Okay, so...
So they're allowed by not being disallowed?
Well, if they're, if they're not allowed by the current code, then that's not what we were told this morning.
I, I'm not understanding. What, what do you mean what you were told?
I'm not understanding, because now you got me confused as hell, actually.
You're saying, you're saying the same thing. The difference is whether it's in the code or not. You're talking about what permissions you're allowed to do. Yes, what you said's true. You're permitted to do that on-site as long as you're not bringing offsite for a person.
No, that falls-
It's not, it's not in the code, but you are allowed to do it.
As long as you're not bringing wood in from another location.
Correct.
Can, can, can we, can we find out where that interpretation comes from? How, what, what section of the land development code we are interpreting to say that from? Because as of right now, sawmill only appear, whatever they're trying, however they're trying to classify that personal use and, and determining where the wood can come from, I don't know where it's at in the land development code. I have yet to see it. So if, if, and that, that's the point. Because there's the capability of somebody purchasing a sawmill and wanting to be upfront and above board about it, to call down here and be able to put in their hand a piece of paper that says, because of land development code such-and-such-such, I can have this sawmill here on my property, without having to fight the uphill. Because once codes assigns a codes case to you and cites a chapter and verse out of the land development code, it's an uphill battle. You have to prove your innocence to get to a level that that codes case gets to miss. And that's the frustrating part on this side of the counter. It's nothing against you guys. I mean, I understand you guys are doing a job and protecting the citizens through the land development code and all that. But from the citizen's side of that, it's a difficult, it's an uphill battle. So the point of what I'm trying to do here is get to where we can say, I can do this, and this is why. Because that's not clear now.
Administrator Suggs, when you're done wrestling with the phone, do you-
We're, we're having to share a microphone down here, and they called up in the court, my fault, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you had a comp, you looked like you wanted to make a comment.
Nothing that hasn't already been said here, that, you know, we understand that there's an, you know, when citizens call in and all, and everybody would love to be able to put their finger on something and says, we're able to do this right now. But you know, your, your codebook is only several thousand pages, you know, in, in depth. So to be able to do that, I think to be able to have some turnaround time is certainly prudent so the fact that we give out good, accurate data and information when we do that. But by definition alone, I think the county attorney has already said it, by not being in the land development code and the definition of a commercial sawmill is, I think it's, the, the personal use is defined by the fact that it's just not there.
Okay. Commissioner Turner, any other comments?
I'm done for now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
So as you're talking, I'm researching cottage industry, and it's a relatively new term. I think maybe there's an opportunity for us to insert something in our land development code that would address cottage industries. I, I don't think it's, I don't, I don't think it's fair for us to single out one industry. You know, if, if my neighbor decided to start building custom-made motorcycles in his backyard one off, I think that would meet that definition. If he cranked, you know, there, once upon a time, I built an engine for a buddy of mine in my backyard and cranked it up, and three people came up in my backyard, wanted to hear what was running. So I, I, I think we do need to tread lightly. I think there's an opportunity here for us to address this in the code by, by having that and defining the parameters. And, and I don't think we're gonna nail everything at one time. I don't think we need to. You know, if, if, I know once upon a time, there was a lady down in Pomona Park that used to sell wedding cakes out of her house. That's a cottage industry. You know, she's attract, she, she's attracting people to come to her property, to take a look at her product. She makes it, and she, she delivers it. I don't, I don't think this really falls too far out of those parameters at all. I've also looked up sawmills. I don't know how you would define a sawmill. You know, there's ones that have circular saw blades, or some that have bandsaw blades, some with electric motors, some with, with big, like you said, thirty-five and forty-horse, big Vanguard motors on them. So I, I, I think, I would not be in any way objectionable to having a, a horsepower requirement if we were going to get into the type of saw. But then the other question that pops in my mind is, they also talk about finishers and planers and all these other things. Are we gonna have to address those individually, or does that come with this quote-unquote sawmill package when? And I'm, I'm just doing a real brief reading here, but if you're taking a raw piece of lumber and you're running it through a planer, that's gonna make a lot of noise. I've got one of those. If you're gonna take and run it through an edge trimmer, that's gonna make a lot more noise. So I guess we just need to kind of go, go cautiously. I personally would be in favor of, of having something like that in our code and not having the restriction of the special use permit. I think that, that would be practical and prudent, especially given the fact that this is still American. We still are supposed to be able to enjoy our property and whatever we want to do on it. But knowing that we can't impact somebody's lifestyle, you know, I, I wear hearing aids for a reason, and it's-
One of the interesting comments that came in, in the, in the planning commission meeting was one of the, one of the board members there mentioned a possible limitation on number of employees or number of personnel working, which also limit, you know, it, it takes, you know, a couple of people. I mean, one man can do it, two people, it, it works out. But you know, if you limited the, the employee count there to three or four people, the problem you're talking about with planers and edgers and, and stuff like that kind of goes away, because you're not doing all the same functions at one time. You're cutting, and then you're planing, and then you're edging, whatever you're doing, that, you know, those, those functions kind of, they don't, they don't run simultaneously. They, one, then the other, then the other, and, you know. But I get back to the original point. What, what we're talking about here is not a commercial level mill. What we're talking about, under forty horsepower motors, is, is a personal use hobby mill that's not, not used on a weekly forty-hour-a-week basis.
I think too, it also speaks to our agrarian nature. I think this bodes well for that. You know, we're not in a, in a county that's like Saint, Saint Johns or Duval County, where you don't have the larger pieces of property typically. We're the reciprocal of that, so I, I wouldn't have a problem-
We're more self-sufficient people in Putnam County.
Yeah, yeah. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem getting there.
That's what we're, that's what I'm trying to protect.
Yep.
Mr. Adams, Zach?
I believe everything we talked about expands, it doesn't contract it, so, from what they presented to us. The horsepower thing, you can never get me to get behind it, because there's no reason why a farmer with a hundred-ten horsepower tractor can't connect a smaller-sized mill to it. There's, there's no reason you can't downsize your PTO to do it. I, I do it. I've done it. There's two neighbors of mine that use, have used my tractor when their tractor wasn't working to run their sawmills. So if you're saying that's fifty-five horsepower, that's not forty.
Well, the, the purpose for that delineation was between where it steps into commercial use.
Right, we already addressed it, where it steps into commercial use, they need a special use permit.
They still have the ability to be commercial.
Right, and that's what we're doing. We're doing a special use permit for where it's commercial.
Right.
And you don't need one where it's not.
That's, that's the point of what I'm trying to get-
That sounds like what you want is already in place.
Show me in the land development code.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Harvey?
Alright, so let me, let me get this straight, and I'm gonna bring this in for Lanny. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you want is a piece of paper. You want to walk in this office and go at 119 Sasso Drive, I'm gonna have my personal sawmill, am I allowed to have it? Then, then if the codes enforcement come, you can go, I got a piece of paper. See, that just adds a layer of government. And I'm totally against adding more government to that situation. Now, if the codes enforcement guy is out there running ramshod and doing his own thing, then that's a whole different conversation. But for me to have staff you pay for a clearance letter for staff to give you, that gives you the right-
I don't, I don't need a letter.
We, but that's what you're asking. You want us to-
Please, let, let him finish. Let, let him finish his comment, and I'll let you comment.
Mr. Morse, here's what you've said. You wanted-
Sir?
I'm being mischaracterized with the statement.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to mischaracterize. Okay, I'm, I interpret it this way, and you can straighten me out. I have no problem with that. But if we're going to have to delineate in our book what a personal sawmill looks like versus a commercial sawmill, somebody's got, somebody wants to come in here and say, this is where I'm doing it at. You mentioned that earlier, did you not?
Yes, in the land development code.
Is that what you want?
What, what I want is if I call up here and I ask Gabriel, I'll say, Gabriel, I'm about to put a small-scale sawmill on my property, such-and-such address, ag zoning, am I okay to do that? And I want him to be able to say, without giving me a letter or anything, land development code, section such-and-such-such, line three, says, yes, you can.
I got it.
That's all I'm shooting for.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry if I mischaracterized you, but I mean-
It's okay.
Commissioner Turner, we'll, we'll-
Okay, I'm gonna try to finish this up. But this has gotten so far out of hand that it's not even in this universe. Number one, I'm not so sure we don't have to do something with the motion of the planning commission today, because we can't just turn it back over to them again, but if we can ask them to look at it. I think we're gonna have to, what did you say, Rich? Okay, so we don't have to take this any further today? We can just leave this in, we can just leave this pending from now till the end of time?
It's not pending, it's just you're requiring them to make further amendment, so-
I'm not asking them to require them. I'm asking them if they would, if they might, would do it or not. This is not gonna be a requirement from this commissioner, because I think they've already heard it once. So I would like them to look at some possible changes. They might tell us, look, we'd like to wait until the land development code's looked at. We're gonna have one of them, I'm hoping one of these days, in the real close future. We're gonna have somebody, and maybe they could look at it during that time. I don't know. But, you know, I know that if I was on the planning commission, it might actually offend me a little bit that I just heard a case voted denial, but heard the other side over there didn't accept it either, sent it on to the commission with, with a recommendation of denial. And I said, well, maybe I'd like for you to take another shot at it. And so I'll just keep sending it back until such time as we agree. I don't know that it wouldn't be just better to do with that. Can I ask one last thing, Mr. Chairman? Are you done, Mr. Morse?
Yes, sir.
Can we hear from the attorney for the planning commission? He's been pacing the hall, the noise won't say something, and he might say he doesn't want to. He can't hear it, and he can't talk.
That is, that is not the planning board attorney.
Oh, he's not the planning commission?
No, sir.
Oh, okay.
That's Mike Perry.
Oh, okay. Well, then we can hear from him if he turns in a card, can't we?
Okay, what, what, what I understood-
Public hearing, George.
Maybe I missed something that was staff was gonna work on, what suggestions that we made, and then either back, bring it back to us, for us to say, okay, take it to the planning commission and let them review that to come back with a whole, a whole nother recommendation.
Or that they didn't want to change it at all.
Well, I think some of them, in the minutes of their meeting, just wanted to wait till the land development code changes.
And that could be, yeah.
And that might be what they say. They might say, we just need to wait. You know, they might say, we don't want to change it at all at this time. But if that's the case, I, I think it's got to start there. I don't think we should just nonchalantly turn the board.
Oh, no. No, 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 no. I'm thinking they were coming up with some suggestions to, to make the changes to what we existing, what we have.
Chairman, in order to try and to finish this, I move that we send this back to the planning commission.
Okay, we've got a motion to move it back to the planning commission. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a second. Alright. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Mr. Chair, I just don't know if you have any other, we have heard from the applicant, but it's a public hearing today, so we still have to-
I'm, I'm sorry. Okay, we want to rescind your motion?
Sure.
I'll resume the second.
Do we have to?
I, I put my motion on hold, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, alright, I'm sorry. Well, I'll open it for public comment. I know you have at least one. Okay, Mr. Ken Swing? Would Swing, if you, and you're on the planning commission, if you will, state your name and address.
I'll state that real quick.
Yeah, and you have three minutes?
Ken Swing, I am on the planning commission. I listened to the first presenter say that we made a unanimous decision to turn it down. I don't believe we did that. As a matter of fact, I know we didn't do that. So I don't know where that information come from. If you're gonna send it back to us, as a member of that commission, I would please ask you to send us, if all they want to do is the small-scale home version sawmill, that's what we need to be looking at. I tried very hard to get that distinction made in our planning commission. And that never was, you guys, it didn't come through here that well neither. So that's what we need to look at. That, if that's what his motion is, that's what he wants to do, then that's what we should be looking at. We don't need to be talking about a big sawmill that sells to the public or anything. We're talking about going to Paul's house and, you know, he may cut up some wood, and I may get four or five boards to put some shelving up. I don't consider that a commercial operation. So if it's not a commercial operation, that's what we need to look at, period. Nothing else. The, the, the bit, one of the things that we had a problem with, and I think it's how it was presented to us, if Jeb was cutting trees, he's a tree guy here in the county. If he's got some nice big trees, he'd bring them over to us, and we can use them. I see nothing wrong with that. But we need to have that, you need to have us look at that very specifically. Not a semi coming in with a load of lumber or trees to make lumber. But that's, as a member, that's what, that's what we need to look at. We need some guidance from you guys, from them guys, from him. And hopefully, everybody can get close to the same page. And then we probably can make a decision that may be unanimous. But our last decision was not unanimous, because I did not vote no.
Okay, I was looking to see what the vote was, so... Okay, so when it goes back to the planning commission, the planning, y'all can make suggestions. the planning, y'all can make suggestions, um, as you were speaking of, and, and make changes and recommend it back to us, correct?
We, we can, it'd be nice to have your guidance on what staff wants. They take their guidance from you, they give it to us, and then we in turn give you something.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
I, I would respectfully disagree, I think the guidance should come from the citizens and staff should take that and present it to the commission. I, I, I don't think that the government should ever be telling the citizens how to, how to run their lives, in this respect especially.
We need to be looking at the one aspect that you want, that we're concerned with. We, we don't need to be sidetracked and, you know, pictures come to show great big sawmills, that's not what we're looking at.
I, I can't speak to what y'all were shown, it sounds, it sounds to me like there might have been some misrepresentations, but again, I think this is an opportunity for us to take a look at, you know, writing another chapter that allows for these cottage style industries and not limit it only to sawmills. If we have other things coming down the road, let's try to include those as well. You know, we do have lots of them that would not fall under farming. And I just think this is, you know, going forward with this economy the way it is and with, with just the world we live in, I think, I think we have this opportunity and this is why, and I appreciate your service to the board, by the way, but all you guys are spending your time, you know, coming in here and trying to set parameters to the community you wanna live in. This is your community.
Well, I did not come here to speak on this today, I came here for your first one you had down in Georgetown or Relax or wherever it's at, that's why I came.
You'll have your opportunity to speak about that too?
But when this, when this came up, I said, no, I think I'll just wait.
That'll, that'll come back to us, so, okay, Mr. Swing, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, any other public comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion. And you had your whole, your motion on hold, do we need to vote again?
I'll remove my motion from hold.
Okay, all right, we got a proper.
I'll take the second off hold.
Got a proper motion, a proper second, and all in favor, and if saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
We need to get hold buttons.
All right, okay, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Morse. Next item would be planning and development, small scale land use amendment ordinance twenty twenty-two oh oh three. And I would just make the disclosure that my youngest son is employed by the law firm that is representing this individual, and it won't have any bearing on my decision. Thank you, go ahead.
Good morning, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, Joe Sealy, Planning Development Services. This is a small, a future land use, small scale map amendment from agricultural to industrial. The property consists of approximately seventeen point two acres, however, this amendment would only apply to eight point one acres. It's to change the agricultural, future land use to industrial land use. Currently, it's zoned heavy industrial with agricultural land use. The property's been operating as a mechanical repair shop for truck transports for over twenty-five years by New Line Transport. They've ceased operation there in the last two years. There's land development code section forty-five, eight thirteen and eight fourteen stipulates that if the property is left vacant or not used for up to two hundred and forty consecutive days, then the property may not be used except in conformance with the regulations of the zoning district and the future land use designation. As mentioned, the southern portion of the property, why it's not being a part of this is because majority of it is wetlands. As you can see here on the aerial, the north portion of the parcel is where the operate, where the New Line Transport has been operating for the last twenty-five years, and the southern portion is all wetlands. This does exist within a commercial and industrial, existing commercial industrial node. As you can see, the properties to the west and northwest are currently zoned light industrial. The future land use of those parcels across to the west and northwest are also zoned industrial, I'm sorry, as a land use amendment, or land use map designation of industrial. So currently, the, the, the AG land use allows for limited industrial uses, but only as that pertain to agricultural uses. So the truck maintenance facility would not be permissible under that land use, however, would be permissible under the heavy industrial zoning designation. So this application came before the planning commission on February ninth, where they voted unanimously to recommend approval to amend it from agricultural to industrial. Staff finds the proposed amendments consistent with the comprehensive plan and staff recommends approval of this as well. That concludes my presentation, the application, or sorry, the applicant is here as well to answer any questions.
Okay, questions from Commissioners, Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, and I'll just make this really brief. In some of these areas, I mean, that's a clear sight that probably industrial is probably where it needs to maintain. Is there any way to avoid it going back to agricultural because of it not being used? I mean, it seems like, seems to me it's the right place, that the, the right zoning to the right place. So why do we need to go back and revert back to agriculture when we all kind of feel it's just the right fit? You know what I'm saying?
Would, I mean, the proposal is to, to amend it from agricultural to industrial.
Right, right, but it was industrial, right, and it reverted back because he didn't use it, right?
I, I, I did some historical research, I didn't see that, I heard that as well.
That's what I thought it did.
That's what I thought too. I could have misunderstood, I thought I read it that way.
You used to have a trucking company on.
Yeah, right.
The zoning has been industrial, but the future land use has been agricultural. We didn't find where the future land use was ever industrial. So it's been a nonconforming use for a long time. When they ceased use for over two hundred and forty days, they lost the use.
Ever since they disobeyed the land code count, I mean, back when the, back when the comprehensive plan was written, we were assured, because I was on the planning commission, that the future land use map would never be the instrument that would trump zoning in this county. Because when we drew that map, I literally was involved in it, we drew it with a piece, with a pencil and a piece of paper without any regard to how accurate it was, only that it was kind of accurate. But then a, a commission a few years ago, this isn't statute unless it's changed, a commission a few years ago decided that they didn't get the proper decision they wanted on a piece, on a land use that somebody was allowed to use by zoning, but wasn't in the future land use map. So they changed that in our land development code or our comprehensive plan because it wasn't like that twenty-five years ago around here. So, you know, so now we've just hit another property that somebody has long ti, long time industrial piece of property, and we just made these people spend seven hundred and fifty dollars and go through the whole process and everything to do what it's been, what's historically been done with for as long as I can remember. And I used to rent the pasture next door when I was a child. So, well, a lot younger, not exactly a child, so. My, my point being is, is we're, we just made them go through this whole process to be able to use that piece of property when they had industrial zoning, they had histor, historical industrial. And on top of that, we, we've made them go through this process in order to get the land use changed?
Count to three. Yes, it's a nonconforming use.
Then we need to change this somehow, guys, this is completely crazy. We got historical use, we got zoning, we got, and now we.
That was my question, how do we avoid it?
Well, that's what I thought it was, Mr., Mr., Commissioner Harvey. But it's still, do you, do you, am I the only commissioner here that sees the ridiculousness of this?
That's why I brought it up.
Right. Okay, can we work, can we work on how, how's the pro, I don't want to go into detail, how's the process to change that?
So the process to change that is when we do the year amendments every ten years, we should take a look at the inconsistent and nonconforming uses and try to see if we can clean that up.
Exactly. Because the comprehensive plan always trumps the, the zoning. So if the comprehensive plan has a land use that doesn't allow for industrial land uses, we could never allow it.
I got it.
So.
Okay, all right, any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, just at some point, if you don't mind, can I read the title of the ordinance?
Okay.
So in ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map to change the designation on approximately eight point one acres of land from agricultural to industrial, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date for case number SM twenty-one dash oh two.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here or the representative for the applicant? Like make a comments?
Do you have a presentation? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioner, I appreciate Chairman for, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I, I didn't mean to start a line of questioning, but the, the Commissioner Turner, Commissioner Harvey, just so you know, those are the exact same questions that my client had when we started this process. And just so you know, it's not seven hundred and fifty, it's twelve hundred. Plus the other cost involved, so.
A future land use map now is twelve hundred bucks?
No, applying.
It's application to do this for my client.
Our cost, we charge them to apply.
Not to mention my time and the surveying, because we had to survey off of all the wetlands and the drylands and get this separated. So it is a concern to folks out there.
I don't know if it helps you or not, Mr. Young, but this is exactly the kind of thing that makes me furious with government.
My client was a little furious as well. But I will say that Mr. Quintus and members of the staff, once we were able to overcome that, that obstacle, did work very well, they were very cooperative, very helpful. The process has gone very smoothly to get here, so we appreciate that very much. Mr. Shiafi as well, they, they spent several hour, I won't say hours, but they had several meetings with me on behalf of my client to get the process ironed out as quickly as we could and to get through it with some of the requirements. So you've hit all the nails on the head, bottom line is, you've got a property that for over twenty years has been utilized in this manner. Really, the only change here is that we have segregated off the wetlands from this process, you're only talking about, about eight acres. Unfortunately, you had a combination of Palatua Properties LLC owns the property. It's named Palatua because part of the business is in Chattanooga and part of the business is in Palacas, and combined the two names. The elderly gentleman that owned that business passed away, and it was during COVID. His son, who was trying to get things together, could not get down here due to travel restrictions. New Line Transportation, which has utilized the facility for quite some time, decided to move some of their operations farther north, I think due to COVID and other reasons, they were having to consolidate. So because of all those factors at one time, we wound up with exceeding the two hundred and forty day requirement. Otherwise, the property, all the inquiries on the property have been to utilize it for the same process. But my client cannot move forward with a new lease or sale of the property until this is approved. So that's why we're here, if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Commissioner Harvey?
So am I correct in understanding that your client started this process, but the two hundred and forty something days just couldn't happen because of COVID and things in that nature? Is that what I'm hearing?
My understanding from speaking to my client is that it was his father that owned this particular LLC. He passed away during the early days of COVID. And due to the fact that there were travel restrictions and other reasons and handling the estate, his son was not able to get down and, and handle, manage this particular property due to the fact that New Line Transportation during this same period of time ended their lease and moved their operations elsewhere. So it was kind of like a perfect storm combination. And so somewhere in that process, between trying to consolidate the companies and the estate, COVID travel restrictions and, and the tenant moving, we wound up exceeding the two hundred and forty days.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, when you're ready, I'm ma, ready to make a motion.
He's got to ask for public comment.
Yeah, I got to, okay, thank you, Mr. Young. Okay, anybody wishing to make public comment for or against this? Okay, seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve staff recommendations on the, to amend the future land use map from agricultural to industrial.
Second.
A proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Adams Act. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and if saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, it passes. Okay, thank you. Okay, we move down, Julianne, you wanna, you wanna, you wanna give us the update or guys, you, as long as this meeting's taking you on a.
We're off.
One away, but.
Tell her to email me a copy, that'd be fine.
That'd be good for you, Julianne. Okay, all right, we'll move down to consent agenda item, I'll open up for public comment on agenda items. The portion of this agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable expected the board will engage in debate or deliberation on matters which has received no prior information. So we have anybody that want to make public comment on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to the consent agenda, and any Commissioners wishing to pull? I'll start with Commissioner Rawls.
I have none today.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
I have item E.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I have none.
Commissioner Adams Act?
Item H.
Item H, and I also would like to ask a few questions about item E. So can we get a motion for the rest of the?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pass item A, B, C, D, F, G, I, and J.
One second.
We got a proper motion to set that part of the, of the agenda, or the consent agenda by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and if saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not gonna go back and rehash all what should have, could have, would have in, in this situation. But I do, I appreciate the opportunity this company provides to our low income housing market that is desperately needed. I do feel like we need to enter into a new agreement with them, I just don't like the terms. And was wondering if we could not bring it to a workshop, or is this time sensitive? That we need to move this item forward today? If it is, I've got recommendation on what the terms might be, but staff, is this time sensitive that we couldn't?
Well, could the other commissioners speak that have their lights on first?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, and then we'll go to Commissioner Turner and then Commissioner Rawls.
I had a long discussion about this with Tava yesterday, and I completely agree with you a hundred percent that this whole situation is not good. But it's also a situation that if we boat up at them and just said, we're gonna go in there, they, and, and we're gonna repossess the place because they didn't pay off on their terms, we have second mortgage, we don't have the millions of dollars that it takes to go put in, and I don't wanna be in an apartment business. Not only that, most of the time, these companies get these things as grants. I don't understand why they didn't just get a grant back then, twenty years ago, and it would be done already over with. So, you know, I, I appreciate this company deciding and Rich negotiating a thing that would allow, that allowed them to come to the table and say, well, we, we wanna pay this back, will you? I mean, we'll work with you on this deal instead of us having to blow up with them or them with us or what have you. So, you know, I, I appreciate it, Rich, and I, I don't know of a better situation, you know, we can tinker with the terms or we can do this or that, but really, any ninety-nine percent of, well, every other grant that I know of wasn't a loan, every one that I knew of was just given to them. So at least they're trying to rectify that, you know, with whatever terms they feel like they can meet. So, you know, I, I think we need to move this thing forward and quit trying to micromanage it.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
All right, do you have any more comment?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
I agree with Commissioner Turner.
I agree with Commissioner Turner. There's a sale that's pending, I, I, you know, knowing what I know about financing and especially with the multifamily deal, this I would imagine is time sensitive. But, you know, we're, we're not doing this ourselves, we're just paying for the sins of others. I, I do agree, I think that we should take a look at, at being able to waive the, the grants or whatever you wanna call it in the future to stimulate necessary housing. Right now, I believe our necessary housing need is, you know, more for your hundred and twenty percent AMI, eighty to a hundred and twenty percent. But in this case, we, it's an absolute necessity, it's here, and you've got a new buyer at the tables. And they're paying back, they're not asking for forgiveness, it's just long term.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good?
I'm moving.
Discuss the turn?
A second.
Okay, got a proper motion to move item E forward and a proper second. I just want to make a comment, I, and I appreciate, that's why we pull these things, so you hear other people's opinions. And, and Rich, thank you for negotiating this because we cut, we could be getting this thing just dumped back on us. And we don't want that. My concern was, and I mentioned this at the pre-agenda meeting yesterday, was the age of these buildings at the end of this loan, but in good faith, who monitors that they would make those payments? Sir?
Guardian.
Guardian.
Guardian, okay. Okay, that's all I have. All in favor, okay, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Did you say? No, I said aye.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, it passes. Item H, Commissioner Adamsak?
I just pulled for consistency's sake, but I won't be supporting it, thank you.
You won't support a free grant?
Again, it's the whole, it's the whole, it's the whole putting, we're up to twenty some million dollars in one geography in the county. And actually, I think this brings it to like twenty-four. We are not making any attempt to to do any of this in any other areas where there are waterways that can be protected. And again, I'm not for taxpayer money being specific to one site, specific one one geography.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval. Second.
Got a proper motion to move item H, approve item H by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Harvey. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, okay, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, four to one. Okay, that completes the consent agenda, we'll move down to clerk of courts.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for giving me a minute. Starting next week, March twenty-eighth, Monday through Friday, eight thirty to five P M, our Operation Green Light will be going on. So that starts next week and it goes for two weeks. So all next week, Monday through Friday, and the following week, April fourth through the eighth, we're actually open Saturday, April second, from nine A M until two P M as well. And so this is for anybody that has suspended driver's license due to unpaid court fines, fees, other costs, they can come down and and see us. Also, thank you, Commissioner Harvey, for going over to Public Works and finding a retired traffic light for us and got it all wired up, so it's hanging over at the at our fair booths at the fair right now. So thank you for that. It's the green light is on, it's working pretty good, we saw that the other day. So other than that, also just wanted to thank the Commission and County Administration for letting us use the old boardroom down at our facilities as kind of a backup jury room. Chairman and and County Administration came down yesterday and took a look at that, so I just want to thank y'all for for letting us use that room to to potentially put jurors in if needed. So that's all I have today. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move down to appointments, and I'd like to start, I have a recommendation, it's an at-large appointment to the Animal Services Advisory Committee, it's Ms. Jenny Oakwood. Her term will expire next month, she's actually the chairperson, so I'd like to make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we
Okay.
appoint Virginia Oakwood to the at-large Animal Service Advisory Committee.
I don't think it requires a second.
Okay.
Nomination.
Okay, all right, all in favor, okay, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you. Okay, any other appointments, Commissioner Adamsak?
District Five, Better Place Plan Oversight Committee, I would like to appoint Laura Parsons, who has the application sent in and approved.
Okay. All right, we don't need any type of motion for that anymore?
That is all I have today.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I have none today.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
I have one on Parks Recreation Board, I'll be appointing Jasmine Rivera, she has filled out her application. Much thanks to Mary Lynn Panetanaria for all her service.
And you spoke to her?
I have.
Okay. Okay, all right, Commissioner Rawls?
I'll reappoint Joel Dansler to the Fishing Fund Committee, that's for District Two.
Okay. All right, any others? That's it? That's all?
That's that's all I have.
Isn't he on the?
He's on the planning commission.
Yeah, can he serve on the planning commission and the fishing fund?
I don't know what the fishing fund does.
We'll have to look at it, Mr.
Well, I have no issue with him whatsoever, I'm just trying to remain consistent across the board on all the appointments.
I just need to look what the responsibilities are.
Okay.
Okay, all right, that concludes the appointments. We'll move down to public comments on miscellaneous items. Again, this portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board, it's not reasonable, expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation on matters on which the board has received no prior information. Anybody wishing to make public comment on miscellaneous items? Okay, seeing none, but we'll close that portion, and we'll move down to County Administrator. Administrator Suggs?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. First of all, you know that one of the items on the consent agenda today was the reconciliation of your signature for the state of emergency that we currently are under due to the tornado that touched down in South Putnam. We have Mr. Stefan Turnipseed, who sat through the meeting today. So whether or not we bring him up to to give a public comment or not, I think it's Jermaine at this point, you and I had this conversation yesterday, and the fact that we had staff that actually went knock door to door in that area to make sure that we're, they had representation, that we could give them any assistance whatsoever possible to recoup any potential losses. And so I just want to raise at least in the audience, let him know how much you, I, and this board and this community appreciate the work at Emergency Services this past week with him and Danny.
Okay, yeah, I was going to go, Stefan, if you wanted to come on up, and if you can just give us a brief overview of what y'all did down there, because it was in South Putnam, and it did, you know, some some damage, and I was just.
All that equipment down there, you fixed it right up, though, didn't you?
Working on it. And so anyway, thank you for sitting through the meeting, but I've had a lot of good positive comments on what your staff did out in the field, so if you could just come on for a few minutes of of what happened, what took place and what y'all did.
Yes, sir. So as everybody knows, March twelfth, around nine A M, we had a EF1 tornado, ninety-three mile an hour winds coming through South Putnam from the Lake George Conservation Area all the way across Clifton, uh, Cliff- Clifton Road up to Crescent Lake. Immediately after fire rescue, they arrived on scene, luckily, we had no injuries, no one was hurt. Right after, Director Grimes came down, I was on my way, Danielle was on her way, and we, like I said, we went door to door, took pictures, asked if anyone needed anything. All last week, I've been calling people, I even went back down, found another person who was affected, but he didn't want any help. So just as a public notice to everybody, if there is anyone affected, please get in touch. We have Red Cross, Volunteer Florida, a ton of state resources we can we can help bring in. As it stands, it does not look like there's going to be any federal disaster declaration, but we are working with the Small Business Administration and with Marion County, we might be able to piggyback off of them to get some help, so. Do you have any questions for me?
I would say thank you, because I've heard that you've gone down a number of times with various people, and you've been in contact with them about agencies that may be able to to assist them, it doesn't look good about any of them, but but J R and your staff are, he says not not overlooking any loaf hanging fruit, I guess is what he called it, so. But I just want to commend y'all for what you did.
Thanks, sir.
It could have been a lot worse, there were no no fatalities, but the owner of the potato farm, about an hour before that hit, he and his son were turkey hunting on the property, and the weather looked bad, and so he decided to go back to his house, and that's when it hit his farm, he had substantial damage too, he did so. Okay, thank you, Stefan.
Yes, sir, thank you, Jim.
Okay, we move down to County, just going to Mr.?
Sorry, I have just. I have just one more announcement, Mr. Chairman, and that is the notification, of course, that you and I have are aware of, that I'll be out of the office this afternoon, and and will return next Tuesday. And so my wife and I will be out of town, and wish everyone a good week and a good weekend, and thank staff for all they've done this week, and we will see you folks next Tuesday.
Okay, have a safe trip, and Julie, oh, we'll get some stuff done this afternoon, won't we? Okay, Commissioner comments, I'll start with Commissioner Adamsak?
I'll withhold for the afternoon meeting.
Okay, I skipped you, Rich, so.
I didn't have anything.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Turner?
Only thing I want to bring up is, we're going to have to change our purchasing ordinance to be able to hire somebody to do our land development. I don't, we, unless something's changed from a week and a half ago, we're having difficulties in finding somebody to do it. Guys, we spent a hundred and fifty grand on redoing our comp plan, and now we and we've got money budgeted to start the land development code, where are we at, Julie?
So we have, we we issued the the original solicitation, and it did not elicit qualified responses or a number of qualified responses, so we pulled it down. We have reached out to a number of companies and gotten some feedback on why they weren't interested at that time or didn't participate. We have also worked with Mr. Quintus, who has a forum that we can try to reach, he has a website or a consortia that has a more dedicated source of those individuals. And our intentions is to try one more round utilizing that, and then, as we discussed prior, the alternative would be not necessarily to change the procurement code, but to ask the board if they're interested in waiving the procurement code to allow for direct negotiations with the a number of, any number of entities that we can find that may be willing to talk to us about the potentially doing it. And and so what that would look like would simply be, instead of having some sort of sealed solicitation, we would reach out to parties that we could get interested and bring them to the table and start negotiating with those parties as to what that would look like, but.
I'm good with that, Julianne, we've talked about this, it's just been a week and a half with you being gone and me being ill and what have you, so I want this to move forward, because next thing you know, it'll be three years from now, and we still won't be done. So it's going to take a little time to do this, we took the first round at it, we weren't successful. And so sooner rather than later, I would like, if you want to try a second round, I'm on board, that's fine, but then I want to come to the board, and if we are not successful in the next round, I want to be able to negotiate directly with one or two or three, kind of like an RFP type process or whatever, and just find out how much they're going to cost and what services we're going to get for that amount of money, and bring the recommendation to the board, and let's get it moving. I mean, we've been, I've been trying to do this for five years, it's taken five years to get to this point, I'd like to try to move it forward.
So we can reissue this solicitation this week, and we're going to know within three weeks of that issuance if we have a qualified pool of firms or entities that are interested, and then at that point, the board can make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rawls?
I've got a question on clients. We have to Gabriel, I guess, are we going to have any concurrency issues with the current comp plan that you that you can see if that may need to be addressed while we're addressing the Land Development Code, will there be any?
The, so the Land Development Code currently has, and by concurrency, you mean like our concurrency management system?
Yeah.
We have a very good article in the Land Development Code that regulates and and sets up a concurrency management system currently, so I I don't think we'd have any issue currently.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Turner, any other comments? Is everybody okay with moving forward with that, send it back out? Okay, all right, Commissioner Rawls, your, Commissioner comments?
I I don't know who this would be addressed to, I've talked to Jay, I've talked to Daniel Carl at at Waste Pro, there's a an issue, and it's come up several times where you've got somebody that throws a bunch of yard debris and trash on the road that can't be picked up under the contract for Waste Pro unless they're being paid extra. And typically, they would go to the homeowner to be paid that extra amount of money. In this case, General reached out to me, got hold of Jay, Jay got hold of Daniel, Daniel goes there and puts a card on top of the pile of debris, and it rained that day, unfortunately, and kind of wiped out the message, but when I talked to Daniel, Daniel says, we can't, we can't go and pick it up because it's too large, and I understand that, but the anxiety that the the residents in that area have to deal with is there's a pile of trash sitting on the side of the road.
But it is on our right of way.
Apparently, yeah.
That's a big deal, it's got to be on our, our fitness every day, it's got to be on our right of way, because by statute, we can't pick up trash off the private land.
To me, it looks like it is. The the issue is that they have large, long, large diameter and long logs where they've cut down trees, so I just, I wonder if if we can't have a conversation in the near future about trying to come up with a way to resolve this where we can, you know, and I hate to do this, but maybe give permission to Waste Pro to go pick that up, and then we, in in turn, charge the landowner, whoever caused the problem, you know, give them an opportunity to resolve it and in in a very short period of time, if they can't get it done, then get it resolved so the people living around there don't have to suffer for it.
Well, we've got the facilities to pick it up.
Pick it up.
We've got a grapple truck.
Yep.
But if we go pick up all private land, where do you want to start?
Right. Well, when I'm.
That's the problem is, I run into this quite regularly in my district over there on the on, over there by the Hardee's, the old, then the Italian Grill back in that area, there's many roads in there that have been historically dumping areas, and the residents just light me up all the time. And the reason why is because they want us to go pick it up, but the stuff is on private property, we can't pick it up.
In this case, it's on the, it's on on the roadside. I know what you're talking about, yeah.
We can usually pick it up on the road.
Yeah, Jay's been able to pick it up for me, we actually had a road, and the lady called me, said you need to send somebody down to see if you can get some stuff off a furniture furniture row, that's what she called it, and Jay was able to pick that up. But, you know, I had to schedule it with him, and and it was on county right of way.
And the, you know, some of the years you're talking about, Terry, is that I went to one, the mayor called me up one day and asked me if I could meet with him, and there was a road they thought was in the city was actually in the county, and a gentleman took a front end, his own personal tractor, the front end loader, and loaded up all the debris, and what we ended up finding was there was actually a paved street that had been littered so much, there was an enormous amount of garbage that completely lined the road, you couldn't even see the road. So I think it's just something we need to start thinking about, you know, we're starting to get our feet underneath this, we're starting to get some folks moving in the community, doing some development, and this would go a long way, but the the people that live here currently don't, you know, have to have some relief as well. The fair is going on, went there last night, it looks like it's very well attended so far. So don't forget to go to the fair, it's a lot of fun. And then we're meeting with the City of Plaque on the seventh at five P M here next month, still looking forward to that, otherwise, that's all I got.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
I'm good, thank you, I'll leave my comments to next the afternoon's afternoon.
Okay, my comment is, to just tag along what Commissioner Rawls says, we are going to meet with the City of Plaque, it's scheduled for Thursday, April seventh, here at five P M. Your agenda items need to be back to Laura by the twenty-eighth, is that correct? So we can have the agenda out by the thirty-first, so it'll give us a week to look at it. As of right now, there are how many agenda items? One? One right now, that's Commissioner Adamsak with the St. John's Avenue, so.
You're in the lead.
So hopefully, I'll reach out to Mayor Hill and see if we can get some agenda items, because I don't want to go in just as just an open meeting, I want to have some items that we are going to talk about, Laura?
It's got. It's got to be a structured meeting.
I can't, I didn't hear that.
Their deadline is the twenty-fifth, and Ms. Sunny at the city said that she would get Laura their items.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I spoke with the city manager yesterday, Mr. Holmes called my office, and we, this is one of the conversations, so both of us are aware, we're trying to get agenda items together in a timely manner so we can get an agenda, so both Commissions will understand what the items on the agenda would be before the agenda is posted.
Okay, all right, thank you. Second, this announcement, the Crescent City Yacht Club has brought back the hydroplane races in Crescent City, they'll be the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh this weekend, and they've done a really good job with this, they're going to have a a drivers and owners dinner with different sponsors there, and that's on the Friday evening, and then they'll race on Saturday and Sunday, so I want to commend the yacht club for putting that on. And I'm a member of the Crescent City Rotary Club, third generation, and we will not have the Catfish Festival this year, I think that's been advertised, but on Saturday, April second, the day that we usually have the festival, the Rotary Club will be selling fish and chicken dinners. in the park, Evil Lions Park, from ten to three. So just to try to raise a little bit of money, we're just talking, calling it Dollars for Scholars this year, not the Catfish Festival. So, maybe the Catfish Festival will come back, uh, in a few years, but just not sure. So, um, that's all, oh, that's all the comments I've got. We got a two o'clock transportation meeting. Um, any further business come before this board? Okay, we stand adjourned.